I'd like to offer our thanks to Bruce Bickerstaff, who has been on this board as a community representative for very many years. So, he has recently resigned. I'd also like to welcome two new members, Joe Ruggurio from East Boston. He's a community representative. And Nadine Fallon, who's the real estate representative. With that, let's proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the extensions. Calling BOA 600-913-175-GO Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. John Haskell from Drago Toscano. Business address of 15 Broad Street, Suite 610. Seeking an extension today for the final review and the issuance of the permit. Seeking a six-month, one-year extension.
And so the permit is still valid?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for G Card. Calling BOA 986-945-6-MELROSE STREET. Is Melrose Street here? No, we'll hold that one off to the side. Calling the next case for G Card. Calling BOA 992-198-686-MASSACHUSSETTS AVENUE. This is a change of occupancy from a group care residence, general to group residence, limited increase residence from 24 to 28. Install a stormwater system in the groundwater conservation overlay district and install a rooftop mechanical equipment. A violation of Article 32, Section 9. This is in the G Card. Name and address for the record, please.
John Griffin, 441 Santa Street, Jamaica Plain. I'm waiting for representation. They're stuck in traffic.
Hold on one second. Christian, the violation, the article is 32-9 for G Card.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Ground Trust. At this time, we would support a hold for signature. The applicant has been very diligent and submitted their plans to Boston War and Sura, and they're just currently under review.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
To hold, and hold signature?
And hold for signature.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Calling the next case for building code. Calling BOA 990-144-142-CHANDLER STREET. This is to construct a new roof deck, interior stairway leading up to the roof deck, and new kitchen and bathroom. The violation is the ninth edition 7080 CMR 1011 stairways. Where a stairway is provided to roof access, the roof shall be provided through a penthouse complying with Section 15.2. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Adam Brerler of Prince Lobel Ty at 100, sorry, One International Place in Boston. With me is Paul McGreen. He's the architect for the project. We're here in connection with a proposal to develop a roof deck and accessway at 142 Chandler Street. It's within the South End Neighborhood Multi-Family Residential Zoning District. As Mr. Fortune said, we conform with the Boston zoning regulations code. However, do not comply with the state regulations with respect to the proposed roof hatch instead of a penthouse. Request is to put the board to grant that.
So you're requesting a roof hatch?
That's correct.
And how many units in the building?
How many units are in the building? There are three units in the building.
Three units? And this would be only accessible to the top unit?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are fine, and it shows a hatch.
So do, can we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Before I call the 930s, I'm gonna, is Melrose, is 6 Melrose Street here? Madam Chair, come back to that.
Okay.
We're gonna go right to the 930s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 930? Address, please.
81 Everdeen.
Good. Calling BOA 928-844-81-EVERDEAN STREET. There is a companion case, BOA 952-066-81-EVERDEAN STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Stuart Schreier. I'm an attorney with an office at 1005 Dorchester Avenue. The reason we're seeking a deferral is because we have had the neighborhood onsite meeting. We've actually met once with the Neighborhood Association clampoint, but they asked us to come back for a second time because they wanted some changes. The owner's making the changes, and they don't meet again until October 21st.
So how substantial are those changes?
Fairly substantial. They're moving, there's an interior garage now in the house. They're removing the garage, moving the driveway to the left side of the house. There's a kitchen in the garage right now, the way the house was designed. It's, the house is, needs a lot of changes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that, was that October 23rd? We did the last, um?
The 20, the 29th.
For the, remember, because we did not have a full board?
It was October 29th that we put together.
October 29th.
Correct. But this is, we're falling out, so.
Even for the 1030s?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna go with a November 19th at 11:30.
Thank you very kindly.
Address?
11 and 13 Henry Street.
For the record, calling BOA 970-446-13-HENRY STREET. Companion case, BOA 970-448-11-HENRY STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Matt Echol. I'm an attorney with Drago and Toscano. The business address of 15 Broad Street here in Boston. I'm seeking at this time to withdraw the appeals on both 11 and 13 Henry Street.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Madam Chair, we do have a couple here. I'm gonna call the first case. Calling BOA 983-023-54-WAVERLY STREET. We have a letter from the proponent. He is there withdrawing, so I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, Madam Chair, the, at the third page, Bernie Street to Tremont. I'm gonna call these in for the record. Calling BOA 808-136-9-BERNIE STREET. Case BOA 982-967-9-BERNIE STREET. BOA 982-962-1508 to 1514 TREMONT STREET. BOA 982-965-1516 to 1518 TREMONT STREET. And BOA 982-955-1520 TREMONT STREET. This is being deferred to the October 29th meeting at 11:30. It's a refusal letter. I'll make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first two cases for 930. Calling BOA 970-041-19-LIS STREET. There is a companion case, BOA 970-039-17-LIS STREET. This is for 19. This is a rectory three-family residential building with shared driveway and three parking spaces in the rear. Violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of off-street parking area. Article 69, Section 29, insufficient off-street parking and location. Article 69, Section 8, a three-family use is forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 69, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. This is for 17, 17 Ellis Street. This is a rectory three-family residential building with a shared driveway and three parking spaces in the rear. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of off-street parking. Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient in location. Article 69, Section 8, a three-family is forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 69, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, the plans submitted to the board are in the form of five pages pertaining to 17 Ellis and then five pages pertaining to 19 Ellis Street. They're essentially the same building. What is occurring is there's an existing two-family structure with an accessory garage on a 10,000-square-foot lot. Those structures ought to be raised. The lot has already been approved for a subdivision pursuant to a separate ALT application. The result would be two 5,000-square-foot lots, 17 Ellis and 19 Ellis. On each lot would be built a new three-decker, a three-story, three-family building with three parking spaces in the rear. The second page of the handout is the proposed site plan for 17 Ellis. I believe it may be 19 Ellis in your packet. But again, basically the same layouts on the site, the same, the same buildings, a three-unit, three-story building in the front, a shared driveway between, and then three off-street parking spaces in the rear yard area. This is a 2F 5,000 zoning sub-district in Hyde Park under Article 69. Therefore, there is, of course, a use violation since a three-family dwelling is being proposed in a two-family district. There are citations related to the off-street parking. Three spaces are being provided for each three-unit building. That is insufficient under Article 69. At the same time, there is also a violation for limitation of area of accessory use because the, the off-street parking is taking up more than 25% of the unbuilt lot area. So, we're cited for having parking on the, on the site, but also cited for not having enough parking on the site.
What is your deficit in parking?
I believe it should be four, 4.5. I think it's 1.5. Not positive. I think that's the case, though. Right, so it would be rounded down to four. And each one is a three. There are citations here for insufficient lot area and insufficient lot width and frontage. The required width and frontage in this sub-district is 50 feet. 50 feet is provided for each, each building and each lot. The height violation owes only to the story height of the buildings. This is a two-and-a-half-story, 35-foot district. These are three-story buildings, but the maximum linear height of each building is only 32 and a half feet. Citation for insufficient usable open space. 1,750 square feet is required in this sub-district. These lots do not meet that, but there is certainly, I would say, about an excess of 1,500 square feet total provided on each lot. There are side yard areas and rear yard areas.
Do there are no rear decks or roof decks?
There are no, there are no decks at all, exactly. These are prototypical three-deckers, as we see all over the city. And finally, there's a side yard insufficiency cited, the required side yard. Here is 10 feet. The buildings actually meet those setback requirements on each side, outside side of each lot. There is one citation here for one of the buildings of, for side yard insufficiency, which is occurring where the, the shared driveway is, and that is a 12-foot shared driveway.
And so there will be easements granting the?
If the, as, as long as the lots remain in common ownership, an easement's not necessary. If the buildings and the, and the parcels fall out of common ownership, there would be a recorded cross-easement. The units are three-bedroom units. They're 1,100 square feet plus each, and they're just straight floor-through units. Our floors 1, 2, and 3.
Okay, so I'm looking at 17 Ellis, and it looks as though the driveway is 6.6 feet?
No, that's the side yard setback. That's the portion of the 17 Ellis lot that contains 6 and 1/2 feet of the 12-foot driveway. 8.3 feet, I'm not, sorry, not 8.3. The remainder of the driveway, the greater portion of the, of the driveway is on the 19 Ellis side. So, it's a 12-foot driveway. There is a, there is a, there is an existing easement that runs along the side of 17, the side of 17 Ellis Street, which will, which will remain there. So, the driveway becomes 12 feet. The majority of the driveway is on the 19 Ellis Street side.
So that's what my question is, that with the caveat, that as long as this remains in common ownership, that's a shared driveway. But should it not, then there is a deficit as far as accessing those three spaces at, at 17?
That's correct. But there's, there's no, there's, there's, there's a disincentive to, to the owner selling one of the two buildings or the two buildings to, to third parties and not recording an easement. Clearly, that would occur. It is a legal nullity now. An easement cannot be recorded between two properties in common ownership, so it's not possible to record an easement at the registry. If one or both of the buildings is sold, obviously, my client, the property owner, would want to preserve access for each building to the parking and the driveway and would, in fact, at that time, prior to sale, record an easement.
And what's your plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are adequate. I do have a question, Mr. Moranci. The basement is the crawl space that's showing, so, and are, isn't there any indication? I'm assuming that the mechanicals are within each unit?
Yes, that's, that is my.
They're not called out in the plans?
Exactly, they're not. They're schematic design drawings for zoning before a permit would issue. Construction drawings would need to detail the, the location of the mechanicals and utilities.
But there's one for each, one for each unit?
Yes, I, I believe that that is the case.
Correct.
Any questions from the board? Does anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde PAC. And if others' meeting was held regarding this project, there was no opposition from the community, so we do want to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any, anybody else representing elected officials want to go on the record? Anybody else to speak in support? Are you speaking in opposition? Does anybody here to speak in opposition?
That we're discussing right now?
This is for Ellis Street, 19 Ellis?
Yes, I am here.
Put your name and address on the record, and tell us what your opposition is based on.
My name is Cynthia Smith, and I'm a homeowner, homeowner of 8, at 8 Ellis Street in Hyde Park, Mass.
Okay. So tell us what your opposition is.
My opposition is that the area is too small and it's too condensed to have, to erect a three-family or any additional units in that space. I am a homeowner and a owner of a three-family residence on 8 Ellis Street, on the opposite side of the street. I've been living there for over 25 years, and I'm one of the, and I'm the last living homeowner on that street originally. I'm the longest homeowner there. The last 20 years, I've spent cleaning the street myself, keeping the street clean, and going to community meetings and hearings about the homes on that street that are not owner-occupied. There's a long history of violence, issues with tenants, and other issues with trash and rodents going on on the street. I believe that adding this area to that home, which the homeowner I knew just moved away, and the new owner that's purchased that area, I think that it should be left as a two-family if that's what it actually is. On that side of the street, it, it would look conducive to what is on that side of the street. There are just two families on that side of the street. On the opposite side, there are some three families and a six family. And on the corner, there is an additional six family. I have worked in the, with the community, and the police have been involved several years with properties on that street that are not owner-occupied, where there are tenants living there, and we have issues ongoing. And I have spoken to and gone around and petitioned for residential permit parking on that street, and I have spoken personally to several homeowners and neighbors that live on that street and the surrounding streets that are opposed to this.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we get, we understand. Mr. Moranci, will these, are these gonna be rentals or condos?
I don't know. I honestly don't. In, in terms of, of the density, I mean, this is currently, it's a 10,000-square-foot lot. It is a.
There is representation. There are the three families in addition to six families on the street.
And multifamilies as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. PPDA is honored.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next three cases. Calling BOA 969-080-13B-RIVER STREET. Is River Street here? Okay. There are two companion cases. BOA 969-078-13A-RIVER STREET and BOA 969-070-13-RIVER STREET. This is for 13 River Street. This is in addition alterations to an existing structure at 13 River Street. And for 13A and 13B River Street, this is to separate the buildings in the rear of the lot. The violation is Article 65, Section 42, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. This is for 13A River Street. Direct a new four-story, two-family dwelling on an existing 11,663-square-foot lot. Parking will be located under the building. This will be one of three dwellings located on the same lot. The violation is Article 65, Section 42, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 42, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 65, Section 9, the main entrance to a dwelling shall face the front lot line. Article 65, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. This is for 13B. The violations are the same. This is direct a new four-story, two-family dwelling on existing 11,663 square feet. This will be one of three dwellings on the same lot. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Norrie Melwars. Aidan Foley, 16 Woodside Drive, Milton.
This is confusing to me, so please explain what's, what you're proposing to do.
What we are proposing, proposing to do, there is an existing building right on the front of the lot, and we are now planning to remodel, keep that existing building.
And is that a one or a two?
That is a single.
That's a one-family, okay.
So we plan to split that in two and build off the rear and turn that one into two townhouses. And then, in the rear of the lot, build two separate buildings, each building to have two separate townhouses. So six in total.
Six units in total? So, so you're keeping that one family, so is that seven in total?
No, we're turning, we're, we're converting the single up front into two.
I see, okay.
And adding two additional buildings.
So, so there's, and how large is the lot?
The lot, I believe, is just over 11,000 square feet.
And what's the zoning district?
Oh, I honestly, I don't know. I'm missing my architect today. He, he canceled on me at the last minute, so.
He can't fix that, I'm not sure.
To have 6,000? So for all intents and purposes, you should be allowed to, to build four, four families on this lot? We are generally not supportive of having rebuilding, two buildings on the same lot. Doesn't matter if three buildings on the same lot?
Right.
Have you explored subdivision?
We have, as I said, we've met with the Lower Mills Association. We've met with all the neighbors. We've had your butters' meeting, and everybody has been in support and approving.
Honestly, I'm asking as buck stops with us, so I need to find out from you, have you explored any other options?
Well, initially, my first option was to take down the building in front and just put up one building, but the, the Lower Mills Association was asking us to save the building because it's right on the street.
Okay, and so you have a number of violations. Can you talk through them on 13B River Street? Tell us what's required and what you're proposing.
And honestly, I wish I could answer that question without my architect. I really don't know.
May I have, may I have a motion for deferral so we can have a full understanding of this project?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
The earliest you can get in is November 19th.
Okay.
At 11:30.
So, and have your architect come up with handouts so we can understand what it is that you're proposing to do.
Right. Okay.
See you then.
Thank you.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 947-294-265-HANKOCK STREET.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to recuse myself.
Well, Ms. Fallon is recusing herself from this hearing.
This is, this is to demolish an existing single family at 265 Hancock Street and construct a new six-family at 265 and combine lot with 259 Hancock Street, an existing three-family and an existing four-family, and turn 13 parking spaces as shown. The violation is Article 65, Section 41. Off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, a multi-family dwelling unit is forbidden use. Article 65, Section 42, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Harold Raymond, 998 Metropolitan Ave, Milton.
Abraham Alvarez, 89. Adam Gilavani in Dorchester.
Building 265 Hancock Street.
So, please tell us what's being proposed?
Okay. What we are proposing is to combine, Ms. Lamb owns all three of the lots that are there, and this is just a picture of, you know, one building we already completed. She came through the Building Board of Appeal. She owns this and that. So what we're proposing is to build a six-family, which is right here. We're gonna demolish this existing building, which is here. This is a three-family. This is a four-family. We have 13 parking spaces, which covers all three of the units there. We have actually six for this building, which is there. The other thing is we have, you know, this is what the building looks like here, sort of right across from the E block area, sort of fits in with the overall development that occurs here. So basically, the parking is underneath the building here for the six units. This is this building. This is what's being subdivided. This is all.
So help, please backtrack. So what's being subdivided?
Basically, this one big parcel of property, which is about 10,000 square feet. We subdivided this parcel, which is about 6,000 square feet out of the site here.
Yeah.
And this has got a big ledge hill and everything, so some of the site goes into that there.
So it doesn't create any violations with the subdivision of the two properties on either side?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we, we had a survey, do all this.
Good, okay.
To clean it all up and everything.
So, so this is, from what I can see, a three-family, 5,000 district?
Mm-hmm.
And you're proposing six, and so this lot is 6,000 square feet?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have the exact dimensions, but that's what I got.
That's close enough, okay? So this is a 6,000 square foot lot. Zoning requires 3F for 5,000, and you're proposing six units.
Mm-hmm. And we've got support from the Hancock Civic Association.
Just please, since you're here and you're the expert on this, talk through the violations for us. We can hear about process from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services.
So we have our street parking requirement insufficient. We do have the parking, which is here.
So you're not, you think that for the, for the units, that for the six units, you're meeting the parking requirement? Okay.
And then we have a parking required meant for the other two buildings. So we have 13 parking spaces.
It's a forbidden use. Two or more dwellings on the same lot. How about the FAR?
The FAR is, you know, you need a variance for that because it's a small thing.
So what's zoning required and what is being proposed here?
The zoning in a 3F 5,000 area, the FAR is like, I think, .8 or 1. The other thing is, the building height is about, it's about 40 feet. So it's about 40 feet here. So it blends in with the two existing buildings on the site there.
And this went through small project review?
No.
Small proj, no, not yet.
Not yet?
Yeah.
So it's before us, before going through small project review?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, we went before the community, but we still got to go through BRA and get their input and everything.
Do I understand the process correctly, Jeff? That it goes through small project review before?
It's only six, it's only a six-family.
Okay, but, so does it need, does it need small project?
It doesn't need small project review. I think there's some miscommunication. It's, I think they may be thinking about design review after, if the board approves.
Because there's a note in here that it needs small project.
It might be in the neighborhood design overlay, but that, it's not the same process.
Okay, so go ahead, Hal.
Okay, so, open space requirement. We do have balconies and we do have a large roof deck. And we do have a lot of this. This is like a ledge, a mountain behind us, so we're incorporating this into the open space there.
So let me ask you, is the roof deck accessible to all the units or just the top unit?
It's accessible to all the units because it's going to be rental housing, owned by the same owner, Ms. Lamb.
And tell us about the size, the number, the breakdown of the units and the sizes.
Okay, so, in this building, we have two bedrooms on the first floor, which is a handicap accessible there.
What's the estimated size of that space?
The estimated size of that unit is about 700 square feet. We also have a basement for mechanical storage and stuff. On the units up above, on the front end, we have a three-bedroom, with a massive bedroom and a deck built behind here. We have actually, two bedrooms, two bedroom there. And on the top floor, we have two three-bedroom units.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are good. Let me question. The roof deck, as you said, is accessible to all the units. There's, is it accessible through a henhouse?
Yeah, they can come up, yeah, there's a henhouse up at the top.
So there's a common stairwell that we?
Yeah.
There's an interesting design feature you have. It's a PVC screen on top?
Yep.
Which is quite high, actually. What's the purpose of that?
Just give it a little identity in the area because it's a crossfire, ink block, and just, you know, just give it a little identity.
Is it, is it for privacy for the deck as well or not some?
No, it's just, it's just the architectural feature, as we say in the design profession.
Okay, and what is the height of the top of the?
I would say the top here is about 10 and it goes down about 3.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christine Brindeo, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We had two butters meetings. We had no concerns. They've also gone to the Civic Association. They have no concerns as well. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckren, City Council. Frank Baker's office would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BTA design review.
And is that specific attention to the stuff on the roof?
You kind of like this, right?
Yeah?
Take a look at it.
Okay.
I mean, it's unusual in the sense that it adds height, appearance of height to the overall building, so, you know, take a look at it.
Will do.
So this is durable. If there was a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set to vote.
Thank you. Calling BOA 966-548, 86 Rosetta Street. This is to extend living space to the basement for Unit 1 on an existing three-family dwelling. The violation is Article 65, Section 9. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Greg Manny, got nice looking world, Jamaica Plain.
So I'm Eric. I'm Eric Bayard, the owner of 86 Rosetta Street, which room.
So tell us what's being proposed.
So what's been proposed is to extend the first floor into the basement to create some living space. My client has some kids coming back from college and they've been having a hard time trying to find a place.
So tell me what the, what the space in the basement will be useful. Will it be bedrooms?
Yes.
Yes, how many bedrooms?
Just one, one bed.
This one? And what's the floor to ceiling height in there?
We'll end up having 7'6".
7'6", and how will you get that?
Right now, it's the floor to ceiling about 7'2", so we're going to dig down a little bit, a few inches, just to, because it's a three-family, we have to go down to 7'6".
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, no, it shows the 7'6", it shows a family room, pool table, and it works with the, with the stairwell. It's all, it's all consistent with the home car, so.
And, okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christine Brindeo, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support. We had no butters meetings and the butters had no concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling the next cases, calling BOA 832-253-36 Good Deal Road. Companion cases, BOA 832-252, 527 Norfolk Street. BOA 832-251-525 Norfolk Street. BOA 832-249-523 Norfolk Street. BOA 832-261-9Leston Street. BOA 832-259-13Hosmer Street. And BOA 832-257-11Hosmer Street. This is for 36 Good Deals, to construct a new single-family dwelling. This is the City of Boston Neighborhood Homes Initiative project. The violation is Article 60, Section 41. Conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 60, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. This is for 527 Norfolk Street. To subdivide lot and construct a new single-family in the City of Boston Neighborhood Homes Initiative project. The violation is Article 60, Section 41. Conformity with an existing building alignment. And Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. This is for 525 Norfolk Street.
Are those handouts for us?
This is the subdivided?
Are those handouts? Are those handouts for us?
Yeah, no, no.
No.
I think you have them already.
This is a subdivided lot?
You don't.
Do I have the plans?
You do have the plans.
The chair was asking about handouts for the rest of the board.
Oh.
This is subdivided lot and construct a new single-family. This is the City of Boston Neighborhood Homes Initiative. Violation is Article 60, Section 41. Conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. This is for 523 Norfolk. This is a subdivided lot and construct new two-family dwelling. A violation is Article 60, Section 41. Conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the lot width is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. This is for 9Leston, constructing new single-family dwelling for the City of Boston Neighborhood Homes Initiative project. The violation is Article 60, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. This is for 13Hosmer. This is subdivided lot and construct a new single-family semi-attached dwelling. The violation is Article 60, Section 41. Conformity with an existing building alignment. And Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. And this is for 11Hosmer. Subdivided lot and construct a new single-family dwelling. The violation is Article 60, Section 41. Conformity with an existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
I've got a vet architect for the project, 4x4 Lowell Avenue, Newton, Mass.
Eric Burke, developer, 77 Pond Ave, Brookline, Mass.
Tell us what's being proposed?
Sorry?
Tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, let's start with 36 Good Deal. We're proposing a three families, I'm sorry, a single-family dwelling.
So altogether, there are eight families that are being proposed?
There are eight, yes, there are eight, eight individual addresses, yes.
Okay.
They're different, however, they're scattered sites throughout Mattapan. But they are in the general area of each other. 36 Good Deal is being proposed. In fact, all of these projects are being proposed on existing lots. Some lots are being subdivided. In the case of 36 Good Deal, that is, that is an existing lot in which we're putting a single-family home on that lot. In the case of 2527 Norfolk, 527 Norfolk and 523 Norfolk and 5, I'm sorry, 527 Norfolk, 525 Norfolk and 523 Norfolk, is being, being built on a larger lot that is being subdivided into three lots in order to, the first lot subdivision lot is 523 Norfolk, which we're proposing a two-family structure on that lot. On the other lot is being, the other, the second portion is of that lot is 525 and 527. Now, 525 and 527 are actually, there are single-family homes there are being done on a similar lot, but the lot is being subdivided. The difference is that there is a party wall between 525 and 527.
So it's treated as a row house?
I'm sorry?
Yes, okay.
In the case of the next lot, I believe, is 9Leston Street.
9Leston Street also has been subdivided, it's a minimum subdivision in that we are giving a piece of that lot to the butter because he needs adjacent, he needs additional lot space in order that he could accomplish his driveway. On Leston Street, we're proposing a single-family home, a three-family home on Leicester Street as, on Leicester Street. Houston Street is, is, is being done, started from, initially, it was one large lot. That lot is being subdivided into two lots in order to accomplish 11 houser and 13 houser. There would be a party wall between the two structures, as per code, but there are separate addresses. All of these lots will, will have a driveway and have parking in the, in the rear. Most of these homes that we're proposing really is part of the DND's Home Nishus Program, which, which what they have done is, is provided to us an actual design for each of those lots, each housing types, which we're citing on each of those properties.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Mr. Olick?
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of these proposals?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Renee Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Here to speak in support of this project. They've gone out to the neighborhood and we've also had one last butters meeting, send that neighbors to discuss. We support the homeownership aspect it brings to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christopher Rooney, Department of Neighborhood Development. These are part of DND's Neighborhood Homes Initiative, all the sites. All the sites include both DND land and funding. And DND is strong support of all, of all that.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that what BRA design review? No, just straight approval. Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 989-008, 24R Judson Street. This is companion case, BOA 989-001, 24 Judson Street. This is for 24R. This is direct a one-car garage. The violation is Article 50, Section 44. The garage needs to be at least four feet from our lot lines. This is for 24 Judson Street. This is direct a new three-family dwelling. This new triple-decker will have a front porch, rear deck, and roof deck. The proposed detached one-car garage. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. Additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 144, special provisions for corner lots and stepback on Dean Street is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Danny Bear. I'm an architect, the office is 2011 Beacon Street, Boston.
Do you have any handouts for the board? Who will you be speaking to?
Yes, ma'am.
Your name and address?
My name is Michael Bryant. I'm actually 20 Judson Street. I'm the owner of this 24.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
I'd like to just briefly start by introducing the owner because it's important to the case. The owner is a lifelong resident.
Please get to the case and tell us what's being proposed.
We're proposing to direct a new three-family residence on this lot, which is a corner lot. It's, it's a typical triple-decker with a traditional design. And we have a few, as listed before, a few violations that we cited before. The initial lot area, which is not what we can do about that. The excessive FAR. .8 is allowed. We're proposing .9. Usable open space, we are short 92 square feet of open space. And then the front and rear yard, we prefer, and it's part of the handout, we prefer the diagram that shows our proposed development as compared to the existing properties on this lot, on this block, contrary. And their relationship to the model, the model setbacks on both Judson Street and the street road.
So let me ask you a question. It looks like you're using both, both curb cuts, right?
The both exist.
Yes. And so what's the garage going to be used for?
It's a single-car garage.
It's a, for a single car? So that's how you meet your parking requirement? Yeah. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christine Brindeo, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held no butters meeting. They had full butter support. Thank you.
My name is Ken Dedabo, one of the homeowners. Longtime resident of the area, know the family, and we're in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BTA design review. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
On the last case, the 9.
Thirty, calling BOA 975-874-555-Dale Street. This is splitting the first-floor unit into two units, as on all other floors. This has changed occupancy from six units to seven units. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. Seven-unit building is a forbidden use. Article 50, Section 29. The lot area for additional dwelling unit insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. Usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Tamara Montgomery and the address is fifty-five Dale Street, Boston, Mass., zero-two-one-one-nine.
Tell us what you're proposing to do.
So we are proposing, I noticed earlier, the description was mentioned, a third-floor unit. It is not. It's the first-floor unit. This is my family home. We live there. I was born there at the home. My mother owns the property. And my whole family resides in the property.
It does say for a floor unit.
Yes, oh, okay, sorry. And in the past, when I was younger, we split the top-floor units into two.
So tell us about this unit. Now, what are the proposed sizes of each of the units?
So we are proposing to split the unit, and I have the contractor here just to help me with anything that is specific sizing. But we are proposing to split the unit, just like the other floors, as my mother is a senior and she doesn't need that much living space. Do you know the square footage?
What's the square footage?
It would remain the same, the square footage is what it is right now. So it's a five-bedroom. It's around fourteen-hundred square feet. It's going to be split both ways, so the F A R is not changing on it.
So I just ask one question. So the current size of that unit is fourteen-hundred and you're splitting it in half, essentially?
It's going to seven-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet on one side.
Okay.
And it's going to eight-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet on the other side.
Okay. And how's parking being accommodated on the site?
So we actually own the plot next door and we utilize that for parking. So fifty-three A Dale Street. I have a small screenshot of what that, what it looks like. But the property, the plot for fifty-five Dale Street, it can hold four vehicles in the back end of plot of fifty-five Dale Street. We own fifty-three A, which could hold an additional ten vehicles on that plot of land, which is already paved and you access it through the same driveway. So you come in and you either go straight or turn into parking.
So, Mr. O'Conne?
Oh, the drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and we'd like to go on record in support. We held an Abutter's meeting on August first, two thousand and nineteen, and we received thirty-four signatures of support from direct Abutters. Some Abutters also felt like the parking was adequate. There's more than enough space for parking on the side lot. It was originally a five-bedroom and they felt like splitting it up to smaller apartments would also help with some of the people that are looking to move into the area.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Weldon Baj from Councilor Janey's office. Councilor Janey would like to go on the record in support of this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Asabi George's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. City Councilor Michael Flaherty. Councilor, go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go back to the G card this morning and see if Melrose Place is here. We do have the letter. I'm going to call in for the record. Calling B O A nine-eight-six-nine-four-five-six, Melrose Street. Is Melrose Street there?
Christian, you want to go on the record?
Sure.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Buscar owner, trust. And we also have the approval letter from Buscar Water and Sewer.
We also have the letter, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The board will take a five-minute break and reconvene at ten-thirty.
This is for Tuesday, September 17th. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, please make sure it's off. And if you need to have a conversation, please take it outside of the room. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. I see a number of new faces here. If you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, put your name and address on the record and tell us why you're in support or in opposition. And if your concern has already been raised, or the reason for your support has already been raised, put your name and address for the record. We are interested in fact-finding, so use your chance at the mic to give us new information. Support you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 10:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor address, please.
267 Old Colony Avenue.
For the record, calling BOA 892-898-267-OLDCOLONIEF. Name and address for the record, please.
Name is George Morantz, Attorney for the Business, Address 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is Article 80 Small Project. It has been approved by the BBDA. However, we do need to present to Andrews Square Civic Association at their October 9th meeting. Therefore respectfully request a deferral.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
We have a date of November 19th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Hearing none. I'll call the first case, calling BOA 966-578, 111 to 113 H Street. Is H Street here? Okay. This is a change of occupancy from a five-family in store with 36A to a five-family in liquor store. No work to be done. The violation is Article 68, Section 7. Liquor store use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Rashi Monglik with Dermot Quilty and Miller at 28 State Street in Boston. This is my client, Indravadin Patel. He is the Officer of Sri Kano Incorporated, which owns a store at 113 H Street, Jamie's Variety. He's here today seeking your approval to add a conditional use permit for a liquor store to be added to the premises. There's no construction to be done. The applicant has owned the store for a couple of years now and would like to add beer and wine to the premises. He has several supporters in the area as well. These are petition-
Please tell us about the project itself. So the store with takeout will continue to exist?
Yes.
But a portion of the store will be used to sell liquor?
Yes. He'll maintain several grocery items in the store and just add a couple coolers and a couple shelves of beer and wine.
So it's essentially an accessory use to the main use?
Yes.
It's not converting to a full-scale liquor store?
Correct.
Okay. And what are the hours of operation?
Six to nine thirty.
Six to nine thirty.
Every day?
Yes. Of course liquor sales on Sunday will start at 8:00 AM.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I'm 10:00, 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM?
I'm sorry, yeah.
How are the plans of Mr. Olick?
Uh, de minimis, because there's no work to be done.
Yep. So at least it shows the location of the coolers?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support with the understanding that they're going to have two coolers filled with high-end craft beer and wine. Again, we understand that we'll have to have a licensing meeting as well, but we would support it if something were to change. I also want to recognize that we have 108 letters of support that people have reached out to me for all directed butters. I also want to recognize that we do have two letters of opposition of directed butters, but in what we determined is that it's more of a quality-of-life issue than something against these two coolers of alcohol. Thank you.
So it's a general quality-of-life issue, not a quality-of-life issue related to the store?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Jay Landstein. I live with my wife and three kids at 422 East Fifth Street, which is just up the block from Jamie's Variety. We've lived in our house now for nine years, and for two years prior to that, I live just two blocks down. So we've been in the neighborhood a long time. The guys that run the store are true, it's a true neighborhood store. They're nice to everyone who comes in. They know everybody by name. They know what everybody buys. They're kind to the kids. You really couldn't ask for better neighbors. I really can't see any reason to be opposed to giving them a chance. Some of the reasons that my neighbors have cited in opposition is trash, which couldn't be further from a problem. I took a picture the other morning when I was walking through my car in the morning. Their trash is, without exception, every single week is stacked neatly in boxes. It looks a lot better than most of my neighbors.
Excuse me, so go ahead. Okay, please, thank you.
It's just not an issue at all with these guys.
Thank you.
They clean the sidewalk, they're great neighbors. They just want to have a chance to run a small business. I'm a small-business owner. They should have a chance. And if there's other establishments around that people want to go, they can go. It's a free market. I don't see that as a reason to deny them.
Thank you. Is anybody here, you're speaking in support too?
Good morning. I'm Josephine Stack, 552 East Ford Street, and I just want to reiterate everything that Jay said. And the young people who are running this store are wonderful people. They're young immigrants like I was myself one time, and they deserve a chance just like everybody else. And I am here to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Representatives of elected officials first, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. At the butters' meeting, the meeting didn't go well, and the neighbors and butters have concerns of quality-of-life issues. And the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is also in opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. I'll be of the City Council, Michael Flaherty, Counselor to on record, in opposition. Due to the plethora of liquor stores in the area, the Counselor does not feel that another store selling alcohol is appropriate at this location. I'd like to go record in opposition.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Karen Foley from City Council, Anissa Asabi, Georgia's office. I attended the butters' meeting, and we were told that there would only be one cooler in the store. That's what they said. Everybody was surprised. They were saying, "How can you make money from one cooler of beer and wine?" But that's what the people were told. So we'd like to go in record in opposition to this project. There's enough beer and wine in South Boston. Thank you.
Put your name and address on the record, sir, and give us bullet points about why you're in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Jack Cherry. I'm an abutter lifelong resident of South Boston. Currently in South Boston is 18 liquor stores, okay?
Can you just tell me about this one, please? This one that's going to propose to add two coolers?
The problem is that we're inundated with liquor stores, and we don't need them. And another point I'd like to make, what I think is important, this gentleman here does not own the building. When we were at the butters' meeting, I brought this up. It's a change of occupancy. He is not the owner of the building, okay? So I don't know how he can sit there and try to get a change of occupancy when he's not the owner. I don't know where the owner is. At the last butters' meeting, the owner did not show up. So they said, "Let's have another butters' meeting." I couldn't attend it. When I asked this lady, "Who are you representing? Are you representing the owner of the building or the liquor store?" Now, I don't know how this works, but on a change of occupancy, I would assume that the person, the owner would be the person. This gentleman is a store renter, okay? And I think it's a very important point.
So your opposition is based on the number of stores in the neighborhood?
There's five within a third of a mile, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Flynn, Flaherty, and Georgia are against it, okay? We have, there's a lot of people who couldn't make it today. He has all these signatures. He put them in the store for people to sign, okay? So I hope you vote with the Counselors.
Did I see somebody else in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record and tell us what your opposition is based on.
Christina Duddy. I live at 434 East Fifth Street. I believe that's either four or five doors up from the store. I don't have anything against this gentleman. He's a perfectly nice gentleman. It's a great thing to have a corner store. I do think it is a quality-of-life issue. I personally don't think I want to live four doors up from a liquor store. And I have seen one other store that changed from a convenience store, like a local community convenience store. It's at the corner of East Fifth and K. And it expanded and expanded, and if you go there now, it's all booze. They have one shelf of stuff you might want at a convenience store, but nobody's going in there for that, number one. Number two, I don't understand why South Boston has to have more liquor stores than any other neighborhood. I mean, I go to other neighborhoods. I'm in South Bo, I've lived in the Back Bay. I've lived in South Boston for 26 years. But before that, I've lived in the Back Bay. I've lived in the South End. You don't have a liquor store or beer and wine store on every corner. We live in a residential area. I moved there because it was a residential area. Otherwise, I would have lived on Broadway. That, you know, there are 11 liquor stores within, or beer and wine stores within five or 10 minutes from this store. And this gentleman, I'm not trying to prevent him from being in business, this is not his only business. There are other businesses as well. So I'm not trying to prevent him from being in business. I hope he stays as a convenience store. I hope that store continues to exist. I think it's an excellent place, but I'm not in favor of it. In addition, we have a lot of millennials moving into South Boston. And they're wonderful. They're great tenants. They're also much bigger, excuse me, drinkers than we are. We've had to go out twice in the last month to speak to young neighbors that were imbibing a lot of booze in the middle of the night, that were really, really loud. We have old people. We have young people. This is a neighborhood with families on it. This isn't just a place with 25, 26, and 30-year-olds on it. And I really don't see any reason to make it even easier for them to get alcohol when they can go out to Broadway or wherever else. Or they can go to the clubs. There are clubs everywhere. I basically can't, I don't feel like there's anywhere we can go, if you're my age, which I'm in my 60s, to have a meal or a drink that's not really loud and really alcohol-infused. So I have nothing against millennials. I like our neighbors. But I don't think we need to make alcohol any more accessible to the folks in our area.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So clarification?
Yes.
It sounds like there is a sense that, is it one cooler or two coolers?
It's two doors.
Two doors.
So it's one cooler with two doors?
Right.
So it's just one cooler?
With ten.
Okay. And the rest of your store will stay as a variety store?
Correct.
And you sell foods and all kinds of everything else in that store?
Convenience items, some toiletries, yes.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please? Did you want to speak? Okay, please. No, please hustle, please, and put your name and address on the record and tell us if you're in support or opposition.
I'm opposed to it. My name is Edward Martin. I live at 440 East Fifth Street, two doors up.
Okay. Okay, you're opposed. Thank you.
I am. Now, they give out, I understand-
So give us new information that we haven't heard from the other two people who spoke.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Fair enough. Now, I know they give out liquor licenses. And the idea is to build up South Boston and the communities, to have more people come in and make it more accessible and more lively. But this is a corner store, not a nightclub, not a lunching, whatever. This is just a corner store. And my sister, my daughter lives there. Now, when you bring a liquor store, oh, sorry, I wasn't going to call a liquor store, in, you also bring the traffic in.
Yeah.
That doubles and triples, because there's the one down the street, as they mentioned, that is congested. But the only is, is an off-street, because there's old folks home there, and there's plenty of off, if you want to double-park an area that you can go. But this is a residential area. So my point is, I know you give out licenses to people, but this is a corner store, not, and he has, and there's been a history of a corner store bringing in, I just want to sell a couple six-packs of beer to changing over. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
If I may address a couple of the points that were brought up? Yes. I did reach out to the Gate of Heaven Association. They never got back to me. And so, you know, we were happy to discuss any concerns they had, but I had never heard from them. Additionally, as you know, I filed a landlord authorization letter, so the change of occupancy is authorized. Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
There seems to be some concern about whether this would gradually morph from a convenience store into a full-blown liquor store. Is there any way that you can provide assurances that it is this one cooler with two doors and that's it, and that there won't be further encroachment onto the convenience store, which seems to be bizarre?
We can put that in the proviso too.
Well, I wanted to first ask the proponents.
Sure. I'm sure my client can provide an affidavit. Once we, if we are approved and go to licensing, then we can make some condition with them as well. We're happy to work with you all to make those assurances.
Do I have a motion, please?
I'm making a motion to approve with a proviso that the approval be limited to one cooler of beer and wine.
And to this petition only?
And to this petition only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 982-844-9-Douglas Street. This is to add a 12-by-12 roof deck in conjunction. The violation, Article 68, Section 29, the roof structure restricted district. Access must be through a roof hatch only. Article 68, Section 8. Rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. The spiral steer to be at least 15 feet minimum away from the lot line. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney John Pulgeni, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. With me is Antonio Ferrara, who's the owner of this project. So this came before this board back in October. At that point, there was some concern. We had a directed butter.
Could you take your conversations outside, please? Thank you. May proceed.
Go ahead.
So this came before this board back in October. At that point, there was a directed butter who was opposed. There was some confusion. She was opposed at the time to some balconies. We met with him after that point. We explained to him, the project had approved. We met with him, and we had eliminated the roof decks at that time. He later told us it wasn't a roof deck, it was the balconies. So we went through shadow studies and things like that and worked with him. He was the only person who opposed it. And this is happiness which you all have before you, it's really, there is a support letter, Brendan Donahue, who was the directed butter. And he was one who raised the concern for, and now he's in full support.
And so the proposed roof deck is only accessible to the top unit?
That is correct.
Okay. Is it visible from the street, or is it not?
No, it's in the back of the building.
Because the proposed front elevation seems to show it as very, I suppose it's far enough back. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Joining you.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held a butters' meeting on August 8th, and all butters were in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? The BRA is proposing that this be approved with a proviso for design review, but you're going through design review anyway on the rest of the project?
Well, there was no design, and we could do a design review for this specifically. The building itself, there were no exterior changes.
So may I have a motion, please?
I want it to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 984-269-416 to 418 West Broadway. This is Auto's Pizza, change of occupancy from commercial retail to restaurant. Violation is Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod. And Article 68, Section 7, restaurant use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Welcome, new members of the Board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802 here in Boston. With me today is Sean Ryan, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Eastern Point Hospitality LLC, DBA Auto Pizza. Just passed around a brief packet to familiarize you with the proposal. Auto Pizza is proposing to open a new location at 416 West Broadway in one of the lower-level suites right behind Cafe Nero. It's the first floor of an existing commercial building. It's at the corner of West Broadway and F Street. There are numerous other commercial uses in that building, including Cafe Nero, Verizon, Be Tone Fitness, Carve Nail Salon on the upper floor. We're proposing, again, a first-class pizza restaurant with 33 seats. Space is approximately 1,500 square feet on the ground floor, 538 square feet of storage space in the basement. There's no alcohol service or liquor license proposal as part of this pizza restaurant.
This is just for the change of use to the restaurant, no takeout?
Yes, this is a restaurant use. They will not cross the 75% threshold in the ISD Commissioner's Bulletin.
Is the space handicapped accessible?
It is.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Joining you.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held a butters' meeting on August 21st. Everybody was in support. All their questions were answered. I also want to point out that they held one of the most thorough and detailed butters' meetings we've ever had. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support. The meeting went fine, and the St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association is also in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Karen Foley, Counselor Asabi, Georgia's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling BOA 989-342-171K Street. This is to extend a third-story addition over an existing second floor. Extend roof deck and headhouse. Full renovation to an existing single-family dwelling. The violation is Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Our class is the House Law Center, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I'm the attorney for the advocate. See, to my right is Matthew Jones, who is the owner of this existing single-family building. The proposal is to gut renovate this existing single-family and to add, in addition, above the second floor of the garage, which has an existing living area. You see on the existing floor plans, there is living area above the garage on the second floor. This proposal is to extend that to the third floor. We're going to add approximately 330 square feet of living area to this single-family home. The gut renovation will include substantial reconfiguration of the interior of the home and rebuilding of the existing roof deck to make it more attractive. There's an existing headhouse, which we raised slightly to increase the head height access to get out. It's very short and squat now. You can't get out very handily. But it remains below 40 feet, which is the maximum height for this subject. The zoning issues are iPod permits, because it includes substantial renovation of 1,000 more square feet. A conditional use permit for the roof structure. And dimensional variance is first being FAR increase, which would go from 2.0 to 2.9. And we were cited for front side and rear yard insufficiency. Those are existing conditions. The new box on top of the second floor doesn't expand footprint or increase the degree of those non-conformities. But nevertheless, it's cited by ISD because it involves an expansion of the existing structure.
Was this project before this board in their recent past?
No.
No?
There was a different, Madam Chair, there was 175 K Street, which is adjacent to this. There were two single-family structures erected there a couple of years ago. This is an entirely different project.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, Madam Chair, I want to ask you a question about the head, first of all, who is the roof deck accessible to?
It's an existing, it's a single-family home, so the occupants of-
Okay, so that's going to stay. Why, and you said that the height of the headhouse is being increased because it's not adequate headroom?
Yes.
Is it less than six foot eight?
When you go up, there are some stairs. When you go up the stairs, you kind of-
Is it less than six foot eight?
It is. You have to duck to get help up to the headhouse. So they're just expanding it, so it's a-
Okay, I mean, six foot eight is what's required in terms of stairway in terms of headroom.
Yeah. So the architect designed it in compliance with code, yes.
So how long has that headhouse been in existence? Did that roof deck and headhouse come before this board? Because roof structure restrictions are supposed to come here, right?
It's very old.
Yeah?
Yeah. The condition of existing deck and the condition of that headhouse, it's an old house, and those conditions are quite poor.
As a single family, was there any thought given to using a hatch, replacing the old headhouse with a hatch?
No. The existing headhouse being there, the solution was to just make it-
No, I understand that. I understand that the solution's on the drawings. I'm asking if there was another solution considered.
Given the thoughts of this board, was any consideration given to that? Because I think you've been before. Have you been before as well?
No.
No? Okay. Any thought given to that?
It was decided that the expansion of the existing headhouse was the best solution.
Any other questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Held a meeting, a butters' meeting on August 12th, and all the butters' concerns were addressed, and everybody was in support by the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support. The butters' meeting went well. We have heard no issues or concerns coming from the neighbors or butters. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, I would like to support the latest semester.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve BPDA design review, but I'm given that it's a single-family home and therefore there's not a code requirement to have a headhouse. I'm going to ask that the design review-
Eliminate the headhouse?
Look at, well, look at the possibility of eliminating the headhouse and replacing it with a hatch.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 970-669-
Calling the next case, calling B O A nine seven zero six six nine seven ninety-eight B East Third Street. This is to construct a rear addition and one-story vertical addition on an attached single-family dwelling and extend living space to the basement. The violation's Article twenty-seven S, Section five, this is in the iPod, South Boston iPod, Article sixty-eight, Section twenty-nine, the roof structure restrictions, and Article sixty-eight, Section eight, side yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Murray, seven ninety-eight B East Third Street, South Boston.
Michael Murray, someone I need to see.
Tell us what you're proposing to do.
Well, we would like to, um, just mention that we'd like to request a deferral. At the time we placed our appeal, we had the support and had an adequate past year and a half of our direct and tactical letters. What we've learned in the past month that concerns have come forward and opposition has come forward from them, we'd like to ask for a deferral to try to work with the neighborhood through our level of legitimate concern, but has not been responsive to our interest to talk to work on it.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Um, we can get you November twelfth.
We had bottom of information today, did we keep that till then, or should we share what you-
Hold on to them.
Okay.
Okay. See you November twelfth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling B O A nine eight three zero six zero twenty-eight Fenway. This is a change of occupancy from a rooming house to rooming house with, and two residential dwelling units. Change to increase the rooming house to forty-two rooms, construct a fifth and sixth-story vertical addition and roof deck on an existing footprint. The removal of the fire escape balcony and stairway.
Would you like us to hold this case?
Do you mind? Madam Chair, I'd call you.
No problem.
Call it back in. Calling the next case. Calling B O A nine six two, two, nine six two zero one eight sixty South Street. This, this is an improvement to the office building. Phase one is a reconfiguration of the restroom, floors two to seven. Phase two is an extension of egress stairway to the roof from levels twelve, eleven, and twelve, and an added stop, and for one elevator to roof level, build a roof deck for tenants. Phase three, building a lobby addition and door and wall reconfiguration. The violation's Article forty-four, Section six, the new roof deck is proposed. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Ruth Solinger, City District, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, thank you for having us. With me is Tom Capalino, who is the project manager and also the architect. For here, um, I did just notice, since I was looking at the notice, that it says for a variance, but it should be, I believe, our condition will use permit, um, section forty-four dot six, for a rooftop addition within the letter of the-
Tell us about that roof deck.
Uh, it is a roof deck that will be added, this is building two financial, um, and it will be added, it will be for, um, the tenants of the building only, and, uh, Mr. Capalino actually can tell you a few more details about it.
So, um, Jason came from Arrow Street as a roof deck. Uh, it's about forty-five hundred square feet. Uh, the, uh, the roof deck, um, will only be used for tenants in the building, it's not a public. Its hours of operation are from eight AM in the morning until six PM at night. Uh, it also closes on October thirty-third at the end of the year, uh, the summer, and always in the spring and May or June with, uh, with favorable weather. Um, we included in our packet, uh, some pictures for you. We also have, uh, a word that shows that nowhere from the surrounding area is the deck visible from the street. We went to do the Leather District Neighborhood Association, got their approval. There's a letter from them including their approval in our, in our packet. Um, we also are contributing forty-five hundred dollars annually to the Leather District for their project place. It's a roof that they have.
I'm not, we're not interested in that. What we are interested clearly is your proposal because you're coming to us from a leaf for that. So this will be essentially a summer porch. The only fixed structures really will be the trellis and the new glass rails. Okay, okay. Looks simple enough. Any, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, four.
Four? Okay. Is that a good thing?
Yeah, a little bit fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Please put your name and address on the record.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Board, dear Board. My name is-
Can you speak up, please?
Yes, I'll try. Uh, my name is Christopher Lucy, live at one oh seven South Street, Unit three B, as a boy, Boston, Mass, oh-two-one-one-one dash two-eight-four-zero, and I do face, my unit faces the applicant's building. I am in support of the applicant's proposal, but I did discuss with them my concerns of anything ever getting blown off the roof deck. They assured me they have large, heavy furniture that will get stored during storms, no litter, uh, no excessive noise. We live in a noise-prone neighborhood, so no, you know, booming music, no laser light shows, and I'm hoping, since it's probably relatively protected airspace, no drones or flying cars.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm in support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, the Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The Councilor would like to go on record in support. We heard from the Leather District Neighborhood Association, and they are also in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have, are you speaking in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Facy Shreve with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We are not speaking in opposition, but we would like to ask for a short deferral so we can have a conversation with the applicants. Thank you.
Based on?
Uh, additional community support, potentially. Process, sorry. Thank you.
So could that happen after today's meeting? Should there be approval on something pretty, pretty low-key?
It's specifically related to the roof deck, so if the board is able to consider them, uh, coming up for the next hearing, I know that it is pretty tight, but we should be able to resolve any concerns within that time. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion for the deferral based on the request of the Mayor's Office.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be October eighth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Calling the next case. Calling B O A nine four six one zero three four sixty-four Sumner Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family to a four-family, also to renovate the building, including the rear and four-story addition. The violation's Article twenty-seven T, Section five, this is in the East Boston iPod, Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking loading done as proposed, Article fifty-three, Section eight, the use is forbidden, Article fifty-three, Section nine, additional, insufficient additional lot area for a dwelling unit, Article fifty-three, Section nine, excessive F A R, Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient open space, Article fifty-three, Section nine, the maximum number of allowed stories has been exceeded, Article fifty-three, Section nine, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded, Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient side yard setback, Article fifty-three, Section fifty-four, screening and buffering quiet, and Article fifty-three, Section fifty-two, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago Scott, open address for fifteen Broad Street. Uh, with me, I have the architect Adam Glassman, uh, and Josh Federman from City Realty, uh, that own the developer of the property. Before you, showing them the plan, and I just want to note, we've made modifications, so it will change, uh, the project when you have the plans that show that, Mr. Olick. Uh, we're seeking still to change the occupancy from a three-family residential dwelling to a four-family residential dwelling. Uh, our original proposal had a fourth unit on the top of the building. That's since, in working with the community, come off. It's a fourth unit in the basement, garden level, is above grade. We'll also renovate the building and it'll be fully spread with-
Is, are basement units in the East Boston iPod a forbidden use?
I'm sorry? Not in this area.
Um, it is a forbidden use. Yeah, I'm sorry, it does, it does mention iPod, like a bit of, and, and forbidden use.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Okay.
Um, the unit breakdown in the lower level would be a seven hundred and seventy-two square foot, one bedroom, one and a half bath, that would be the garden level unit. All of the other units are existing, uh, three-bed, two-bath, with a rear addition on the building. Um, so there would be a sixteen-foot addition in the rear that would make those units a little bit larger. Um, we've worked with the community to eliminate and modify this project, which was eliminating the fourth floor, and in doing so, we've taken away those violations for height and stories, height and feet, uh, and front yard with no fourth-story addition on the project. I will go over the violations, Madam Chair. Use is a violation, so it's a three-family, and we're proposing four. Lot area for additional dwelling, thousand required, we're at five hundred. F A R, one-point-oh, or at one-point-two-nine currently, would be increasing to one-point-eighty. Uh, the side yard is a pre-existing violation, the structure would not change, there would be no change in the side yard. Open space, uh, three hundred square feet per dwelling unit, which would equal twelve hundred square feet, or a two-fifty-five per dwelling unit and a thousand twenty-one, uh, and one parking space would be required for the new dwelling unit. We're not able to provide that.
And what's the, um, square footage, the total square footage of the addition?
Uh, the total row square foot is a hundred and sixty-two square feet per floor. Um, that's six forty-eight total.
And there's no roof deck?
And there is no roof deck.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, drawing ready. The, the elevation shows, uh, from the basement, floor to floor, seven foot eleven. What's the ceiling height, the internal ceiling height?
Seven-six, yeah.
Seven-six?
Yes.
And all utilities will be in each unit, or?
Individual.
Individuals, okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this, just?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, uh, the developer addressed the concern of the abutters and also got the strong support from Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Ricardo Patrum from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The Council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Just a question, do you, are these supposed to be rentals, or, you know, we've seen your projects all over the city. Do they generally go, um, for sale, or are they rentals?
So this project would be condos for sale.
This will be condos, okay.
And it's varied, for the board, Madam Chair, some condos, some rentals.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to approve, I don't think we need a design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
I'm gonna call the Fenway case back. Calling B O A nine eight three zero six zero twenty-eight Fenway. This is a change of occupancy from a rooming house to rooming house with two residential dwelling units. Change to increase rooming house to forty-two rooms, construct a fifth and sixth-story vertical addition with roof deck on an existing footprint. The removal of the fire escape balcony and stairway. The violation's Article twenty-nine, this is in the G Pod applicability, Article thirty-two, Section four, this is in the G Pod applicability, and Article sixty-six, Section thirty-eight, roof structure and building height, Article sixty-six, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article sixty-six, Section nine, the building height is excessive, and Article sixty-six, Section nine, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney John Pulginie, ten Forbes Road in Grantry. With me is, um, the architect, Adam Grassi. So the proposal before you is to, um, add two stories, um, that will be two units above an existing forty-two unit rooming house.
That's currently forty-two units?
Correct. And it has been used such for over a hundred years. This was a rooming house.
Owned by the church, by the Catfish Sisters, or?
It was previously owned by a holding company for a fraternity, uh, related to M I T. Uh, it is currently owned by the developers in honor of the project, Bruce Miller and Frank Hop. We're here today.
Okay.
So, uh, as far as violations go, we have, uh, G Pod, we are working with the Parks Department on that. G Cod, we have, um, an approval for that. Roof structure and building height in this neighborhood, any increase in height triggers that variance, as well as the, um, building height is excessive. F A R, we are actually under F A R. F A R is a four. Uh, we are at three-point-three-seven, and rear yard insufficient is pre-existing.
Can you please hold on for a minute?
Absolutely.
Because the mics, I guess, are not working.
Did you guys hear me?
We hear the mic count.
Oh. Sorry, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, I'll just go through that quickly again, the violations. Uh, G Pod Parks, we're working with them right now. G Cod, we have approval from Groundwater Trust. Roof structure and building height, every time there's a increase in the size of the building in this neighborhood, it triggers that. F A R, we're actually below F A R, where, where there's a four, we're at three-point-three-seven. Rear yard's insufficient, we're not doing anything outside the building envelopes, that's all extending, pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming. The, um, went through a community process, I provided the-
John, so tell us about the residential dwelling units. What are their sizes?
So the, the two new units will be approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet each, and the three-bedroom units. And those units actually will be for the two owners of the building. They're actually moving it on-site.
Uh, tell us about the forty-two rooms. Uh, who are the general occupants of those, those rooms?
Uh, the forty-two rooms are, that was a, an existing occupancy, and it will be operated as a, a temporary lodging house by the owners and the new residents of the upper units.
And will it, will they be affordable, or, I mean, what's a lodging house today? I don't know. Is that an Airbnb? I don't know what it is today.
It, uh, it is, it can be that, and it's covered by a variety of resources to discover the units, but it's typically out-of-towners. Um, my clients, the owners, run several of these throughout Boston, and the typical occupant is perhaps a, a visiting medical student in town for two months for, uh, a training, um, seminar, or something like that. Um, so it is, it is, is a temporary use, uh, for, for residents. So they're, they're roughly, um, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred square foot units. Uh, they feature, uh, bed, they're single occupants.
And so, and so tell me, do they all have individual bathrooms?
They do have individual baths. And just to be clear, this was permitted under a separate permitting process, um, by right, so, uh, currently, we're applying for the, the expansion on the roof.
Two units, okay.
And Madam Chair, could I just address one quick thing? The, um, through the community process, you guys have a, a letter of non-opposition from the Fenway CDC, and you'll see that there's M O U attached to that. One of the requirements throughout the community process with this was not to be rented out to students, and the owner has agreed to that as part of, remember, understanding.
Undergrads, grads, students, the end, period, the end?
Period, the end.
Okay. How about the roof deck?
The roof deck is, uh, private use for the two units on, on the top two floors proposed. Uh, it will not be accessible by, uh, the occupants of the lower stories of the building.
And how will it be accessed?
It will be accessed through a headhouse.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. Um, this case was actually before you in February. Um, it was G Cod only at the time. Um, the board approved it at that time, and the water and sewer approval letter has not changed because those calculations are just based on the area of the building, and that, that hasn't changed.
Thank you.
We do have the letter, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Shanice Puntel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant completed a successful community process in which they received full support from the immediate abutters. The applicants met with the Fenway Civic Association and the Fenway Community Development Corporation. I attended the F C D C's meeting on September, September fourth to make sure I cleared up any concerns regarding the community process. Both the F C A and the F C D C expressed concerns, and we appreciate the applicant's willingness to accommodate the community's requests. However, I would like to make it explicitly clear that many of the concerns expressed were not regarding the proposal nor the variances requested. In fact, support was expressed towards the architectural design and historical integrity. Um, and we ask applicants continue working, continue developing a neighborly relationship with the community, and given this information, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling BOA 934-885, 199 Trenton Street. This is a direct addition with roof deck, extend living space into the basement, and change occupancy from a 2 to 4 unit. The violation, Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction and extension of a non-conforming building. Article 27T, this is in the East Boston IPod. Article 53, Section 56, insufficient parking design. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article 53, Section 8, Section 9, insufficient open space dwelling unit. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering required, and Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and through to the members. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Brad Gold.
Madam Chair, this is a proposal to, for the complete rehabilitation of existing two-family dwelling. As you can see from the packet of materials that I've provided the board, this building is in condemnable condition, and it's located in the Eagle Hill Square section of East Boston. Our proposal would be for a complete rehabilitation renovation along with a vertical addition that would result in a change of occupancy from a two-to-a-four family dwelling. Each of these units would be reprogrammed. The lower units would be duplex style with living space located in the basement with main living space located in the first level. Units three and four be located, are located in the third, second and third level, designed as flats. Of course, because of the extent of the renovations that are being proposed, this building would have a complete upgrade to the life safety, which doesn't presently exist, we are able to include two-plus parking spaces in the rear of the property. There is a proposed roof deck as well that would be exclusive to unit four, and that roof deck would be accessed by hatch, no head houses proposed based upon commentary that we heard from the Eagle Hill Civic Association during the community process. Upon completion, this is intended for homeownership and would be owned as individual condominium units. We did have an opportunity to present this extensively to both the Eagle Hill Civic Association as well as the abutters, and we do have a favorable letter of support from Eagle Hill. With respect to the unit breakdown, these are generous-sized two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. The lower levels range between 1,000, almost 1,100 square feet, up to about 1,700 square feet for two bedrooms, and the unit three and unit four are around 11,000 to 1,400 square feet for three bedrooms on the upper levels. Respect to the relief that's necessary, the secretary correctly identified what is contained in the public notices, this would be a reconstruction extensive and non-conforming building because of the existing 3F 2,000 sub-district and the zoning dimensional regulations that are applicable under Article 53. With respect to screening buffering, we obviously can address that through the BPDA designer review process of this board, where to grant relief. And then with respect to the additional items, they're all triggered basically based upon the proposed renovation and addition and fit out of the building. As you can see from the design that we've incorporated based upon the architect's concept for this, it's consistent in size and scope of what is adjoining on each side of the property. This would look and have the feel of a traditional triple-decker in the Eagle Hill neighborhood, based upon the comments that we did here through the community process. Eagle Hill anticipates or expects that the BPDA designer review process would take into account the traditional design elements that are usual and customary for the Eagle Hill neighborhood. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And the roof deck is only accessible to the top unit?
That is correct.
Unit number four?
Number four, correct.
And what's the size?
Roof deck size.
And how is it accessed?
Accessed by hatch.
And the floor to ceiling height in the basement?
In excess of, I believe it's eight feet.
Eight feet. How are the plans?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Roof deck is 12 by 12, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the developer addressed many of the concerns of the abutters. Also, there was a strong support of this project during the abutters meeting, and Eagle Hill Civic Association voted in support of this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA designer review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 961-467-4751, Webster Street. This is a restaurant outdoor seating for 22 with food and alcohol service. The violation, Article 9, Section 1, extension of a restaurant used within a residential sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, on behalf of the petitioner. With me, Phil Frateroli, the owner and operator in our tavern. Madam Chair, we anticipated proceeding this morning with respect to the proposal before the board. We're informed before the hearing that the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services received some additional concerns or comments from the abutters. As this is not a time-sensitive petition, the outdoor seating is seasonal and likely to not ramp up until next April, we're happy if the board is so inclined to take a short deferral to try to work on any additional items that come up with the abutters.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We can do December 3rd or December 17th. We'll do December 3rd.
Thank you very much.
December 3rd or 11:30.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 956-105-200, William McCollin Highway. This is a change of occupancy to an auto body shop and build a 45 by 25-foot addition to the garage. The violation's Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston IPod, and Article 53, Section 15, a repair garage is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Albert Farron, and I represent the owner, Stephen D. Simone trustee. With me is Carlos Pereira, he is the lessee, Eduardo's auto body of the property in question, and Mr. Hal Abrams as well.
What is the current use?
I'm sorry?
What's the current use?
Well, the, since 1979, the property has been used as an auto body shop, and there's a dispute between the ISD and Mr. D. Simone, the owner, about whether or not permits were properly issued for an auto body shop. But there is absolutely no question about that. For almost 40 years, thousands and thousands of cars have been repaired there, stored there, painted there. The city has taxed the property based on this use. The city officials, including from the fire department and from the ISD, have continuously, over the last 40 years, come to the property and approved of its use and the safe use of paints and other flammable's there.
Okay, so let's, so given that background, tell us about the proposed addition?
Sure. The proposed addition is to the garage. I have copies here, but it might be easier just to pass them out. I think the best one is just shown, I guess we can show it on this right here.
So please talk us through this?
Yeah, sure. So the first page shows where the property is located, McCollin Highway, Route 1A, southbound, heading into, heading into Boston. I'm sure you all know the area. It's filled with commercial uses. There is an auto body shop at the corner of Ashford Street and McCollin Highway that's been there for several years, and in 2017, this board approved a medical marijuana facility on the abutting property at 220 McCollin Highway. The first page shows the plot plan, and it shows the existing building, and to the side of it, it shows the garage. And the garage, as it currently exists, is about 415 square feet. The proposal is to enlarge the garage to something on the order of 1,170 square feet. And it's that proposal that triggers the IPod relief.
And tell us about the, how will that affect parking or anything else? It doesn't appear that it will.
Respectfully, respectfully, it won't. In fact, it will allow fewer cars to be parked outside and more cars to be parked inside and worked on. That's the whole purpose of adding to the garage.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Straightforward.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, there were no concerns about the proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Can we have screening and buffering across along the McCollin Highway?
Okay.
The design review.
That's up to you.
Yes, so there's, and is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and I'm assuming, since you're abutting the creek, you know that you have other processes that you need to go through.
We do. Thank you very much.
Calling the last case for 10:30, calling BOA 954-504-30, Orleans Street. This proposal involves constructing a new two-family residential with parking for 1,008 square feet in the rear. The violation's Article 25, Section 5, this is in the flood hazard district applicability. Article 53, Section 9, the lot size directed two-family dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the minimum lot width requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the minimum lot frontage is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the flood area ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the minimal usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the minimum front yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the minimum side yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the minimum rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article 27T-5, this is in the southeast Boston IPod. Name and address for the record, please.
This attorney, Arthur Goldberg, 183 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. And I have with me today, I have Mr. Rubiglio, who's the father of the developer, they're a father and son team.
So tell us what's being proposed?
We're proposing to build a two-family house, and if you may, I know the drawings you have are kind of small, I tried to magnify it last, and I couldn't read the unit size if I may.
So just talk us through it, because what I'm, what, I'll tell you the bottom-line concern I have is that this is in a flood hazard district, and I'm assuming there's no living space in the basement?
There's no basement.
There is no basement?
There's not going to be a basement. This is a rendering of the proposed building.
So it's on slab?
It's, no, it's going to be 14 feet up in the air, it's going to be a two-car garage, a two-car garage, and two units, and I believe the plans show that, certainly this shows it, actually. The neighbors complain about where the mechanicals would be. So if you look on this one, which is larger, it clearly shows the HVAC systems are installed using modern technology, 14 feet above ground level for both units. And the Neighborhood Association, and I don't know if you received their letter, because it was only just sent, but the Neighborhood Association...
That's the question for you.
The Neighborhood Association wrote, "The community appreciates the design and the building, which is in keeping with the neighbors, makes good use of this very small 1,008-square foot lot, which otherwise is a vacant lot, and vacant lots attract to the city." I can let you leave to your own imagination.
I'm sure, but if the property owner is diligent, I'm sure they would maintain the property well.
Right, but this is...
But in the meantime, let me, Jeff, I have a question for you. Since the violation is flood hazard district, what does that mean? Are they asking for relief from the flood hazard district requirements?
Yes, yeah.
They are?
Yep.
Okay.
But we think we've avoided that issue by not having any residential units, no mechanical structures, nothing there. It's just...
What base flood elevation in that location? Do you know if it's, how many feet it is?
I think I do that, yeah.
Yes.
You're looking over there.
Yes, just a second.
We'll be on it.
In the meantime, Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
The drawings are okay.
Any questions from the board?
Would you like I have, would you like to see more of the proposal? There was a building there 50 years ago.
Okay.
This is a series of multiple parties, should be nice for everybody.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
First floor elevation is 14 feet above.
Elected officials first, please.
Representative elected officials, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, this has a strong support from the abutters, as well from the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, that has a strong support of the design. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
This is a resident in support.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
The resident who's in support, he speaks Sicilian slang, and he can speak himself.
Hold on, hold on. I'm trying to figure out who's chair of this meeting here.
You are, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Are you speaking in opposition?
I'm in opposition, Ed.
Okay, please go ahead in opposition.
Thomas Garvey of 137 Webster Street, East Boston. I don't believe this lot size is credible as a two-family residence. My feeling, and the word on the street is that's going to be Airbnbs, so I would hope that we could do a little discovery here and understand if this is intended as an owner sort of occupied residence, if it's intended as a rental, or what exactly the intent is of this very tiny lot in which you're claiming you can squeeze two-family residences. Thank you.
Any comments of the board, okay? And thank you. Anybody else in opposition? And we want to recognize one resident who is here in support, but is not fluent in English. What says address, do you have it?
My name is Paolo Graziano, I support Ricky Vario.
Thank you. Thank you. So are these rentals, or?
Yes, they're, they're going to be rentals. Two rentals.
Okay. Okay, so looks like these are one-bedrooms, five, what's the...
Five hundred square feet, yeah. The cameras should give you the blow-off.
No, good, thanks. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA designer review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Your opposed? Motion carries.
Can you have some, if I...
Madam Chair, do you want to take a break, or do you want to continue?
Just ask for the...
I'm going to call the 1130s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Deferrals and withdrawals only. Are you deferring, sir, or are you withdrawing? Address, please.
64 Poitres.
For the record, calling BOA 940-761-64-Poitres. Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Pyatt, 34th Century Lane, Milton.
And what's the reason for your request?
We, we were originally scheduled back in July, and it was deferred because they wanted some more, they wanted me to meet with a group called Belnell, who the Mayor's Office was not familiar with. So we had trouble meeting with them because people, somebody's sister died, somebody was on vacation, so we met just before the, just before I went away on vacation. There just hasn't been a lot of time to...
So you haven't been able to connect, okay? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please.
We can squeeze you in on the November 12th meeting at 11:30.
Thank you.
Address, please.
181 Coleridge Street, East Boston.
For the record, calling BOA 892-077, 181 to 183 Coleridge Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Monahan, 18 Rock Island Road, Quincy.
And what are you requesting a deferral?
We're requesting a deferral. We're requesting a deferral. We had our, it's a BPDA public hearing on September 10th last week, and the comment period ends the 24th, December 24th, for the public hearing. We'd like to defer to the next, next available date if possible.
So this is for 19 residential units. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, when do you anticipate this will go to the board?
Already, what's...
It's already at the board, okay? So if it's gone to the board, why do we need a deferral?
Just wanted to be here on the record for deferring, because we had a date scheduled for today.
I'm sorry?
We had a ZBA date scheduled for today, so we just wanted to be on the record to defer.
But you've been approved by the, by the VPDA, so why do you need a deferral?
We have not been approved by the VPDA.
I thought you just said you went September 10th.
We had the public hearing, September 10th, with the neighborhood.
Okay, okay. Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the date, please?
The earliest we're going to get you in is 11:12.
Okay, 11:12 at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
Okay. The board will take a five-minute break and will resume at 11:45.
First case for 11:30. Calling BOA 959-256-71 Stanton Street.
Stanton Street, yeah.
Okay. This is new construction of a three-family and a vacant lot. Violation Article 65, Section 9. Lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. Additional lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. Lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. Lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. The building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The building height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9. The front yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9. Side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Alex Edwards in 71 Stanton Street.
Harold Raymond, 998, Mr. Holland, Mount Milton.
So why were you deferred the last time? Why were you deferred the last time?
We were, oh, I was in a hospital.
Oh, okay, I'm glad to see that you're out. So please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Oh, yeah, so Stanton Street in Dorchester is your typical Dorchester lot. Most of the lots are like between 4,000 and 5,000 square feet. So the lot that we're looking at here is building a three-family house.
And what's the size of the lot again?
The lot is 27 by 150...
You're asking me to do math?
Math is 4,666.
27 by 126.
It's 4,000, right?
666.
Okay. Okay, and you're proposing a three-family?
Yep, three-family.
With parking in the rear?
Yep.
Are you proposing a roof deck?
No, we eliminate that as agreement with the neighborhood folks. Took that off, so basically we got four parking spaces, deck in the back.
The basement, you've got space for a family room in the basement?
Yeah, it's a duplex down.
Four for each space. Okay.
And the floors up above are each three bedroom units there with a deck in the rear. And elevation of the building.
It's nice to see some good design.
Yep.
Is this one of Hazza's designs, Hazza High Press?
I didn't hear.
Is that one of Hazza High Press's designs?
No, this is my design.
This is your design?
Just like the game box street.
For us, the boxes we tend to just see.
Yeah, well, I like to get a little bit neighborhood character in it.
Did you say that the roof deck was eliminated?
Yeah, it's been eliminated.
Okay, because these plans show the roof deck.
Yeah, I submitted a set of plans to ZBA that had the roof deck taken off.
That was taken off, okay, that's not what I have. Is there anything else different?
No, we just took the roof deck off.
Okay, just another question. The driveway, the left side, is a little on the narrow side, nine feet wide?
Yeah, mhm. That's sort of the...
What's, what's, what's the property to the left of...
The property to the left, that. So here's the property here, which is to the left, and then property...
Well, I guess what I'm asking is what's to the immediate left of the edge of the driveway?
Of the driveway? It looks like that there's another driveway that goes with this house right here.
It looks like there's a curb cut in there.
Okay, all right, so it'll...
That's, that's why I put it there.
Should work right.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Whitney Haleson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. So this property, this proposal was reviewed at the Rock Neighborhood Association in the Carden Square Council. We did hold an abutters meeting for this proposal. While we do understand there are quality of life concerns from the right side of butter because of the side yard that was flagged for the architect, who did say he looked into fixing that, but at this time, we do not find any reason to oppose this three-family going into this three-F lot. The Rock Group and the Carden Square Council both gave us letters of support for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President, Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record, sir, and tell us why you're in opposition.
Hi, good morning, Chair. My name is Sheldon Brathwaite. I live at 69 Stanton Street, Dorchester, right next to the proposal. Some of the things we are hearing now, they never proposed it to the group.
So tell us what your opposition is based on?
My opposition is based on all the violation and insufficient spacing. And as the gentleman just said, the planning of the deck, that was never, we never know they changed the deck. They never came back to us and tell us anything about changing of the, the design of the property.
It sounds like from what was represented, the design didn't change, they just removed the deck. Is that, so that, that's what I understand.
Right. We had a meeting on May 9th, and after May 9th, there has never been another community meeting, another meeting on this issue. So it's kind of a new term. My, my concerns are all the violations they already have and the efficient spacing that's located with the property and the parking issue. We had only...
What, what is your parking concern?
They're proposing a three-family house, and the street itself is, has 80% of it is multifamily. I'm the only single-family resident there, so the parking, it's insufficient parking for the property.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
It also has three churches on the street already.
Thank you, sir. So the parking that you're proposing for this building, for these three units, you're proposing four parking spaces in the rear of the building? And that meets the parking requirement?
Mhm.
It does?
Yep.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, so let me just be clear about, you said there's an updated set of plans that eliminate the roof deck?
Yep.
All right, I would prefer to stamp the accurate plans as opposed to what I have in front of me.
I have a set of plans without the roof deck that I can give to you.
Okay, why don't we do this? I'll make a motion to approve a design review, but hold signature.
Yeah, because we'll just hold it for a couple minutes until you give Mr. Ehrlich. So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
I'm going to call the next case, calling BOA.
Mr. Edwards, you will be working with your abutter to make sure that this construction works into everybody's comfort.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 880-056-249 to 251 Milo Street. This is to demolish an existing building and erect a new three-story, nine-unit residential building with side and roof decks and 14 parking spaces in garage. The violation is Article 65, Section 8. A multifamily dwelling is forbidden use. Article 65, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. The building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9. The building height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9. The front yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is James Rudser, and I represent the applicant before the board. I believe we have handed out to the members of the board the most updated set of plans, and Mr. Ehrlich has been provided during the break with the ISD stamped copy. As a result of our thorough participation in the community process, what was originally the subject of this appeal was a nine-unit, three-story building with underground parking underneath it. The most recent plans call for a six, a six-unit building that is substantially smaller both in mass and also on lot coverage.
So does it change the violations in any way?
It decreases the proposed violations. It doesn't increase any of...
So your front yard, side yard stays the same. Does your height change?
No.
And your FAR probably has decreased, has it?
The FAR has decreased from what was originally going to be 1.3 down to 0.9.
And the violation, the use is still forbidden?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
If I could defer to the architect to answer the board's questions.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. This is a site bounded on three sides by road or private way. There's a 20-foot grade difference from the rear to the front. Initially, we put the garage into the hill with residential units above. Through extensive community outreach and negotiations, we reduced the unit count from nine to six units, removed the garage, and put the parking in the rear of the property. It's still a three-story building, but now it's a six-unit building with eight parking spaces, down from a nine-unit building with 15 parking spaces.
So parking is not, is not a violation?
Uh, no, no. It's one...
Parking?
No violation, ma'am.
Tell us about the size of the units?
Yes, Madam Chair. The first floor units are duplexes, are townhouse units, three-bedroom, three-bath units, 1,850 square feet. The second floor units are two-bedroom, two-bath units at 1,200 square feet. And the top floor, the third floor units are two-bedroom, two-bath at 1,300 square feet.
And are there roof decks?
There are roof decks access by bulkheads.
Sorry?
There, there are roof decks access by bulkheads.
And this, by bulkheads, and it's only to the top units?
It's dedicated to the top units only, Madam Chair.
Let's see, let's see what your violations are. Front, side, okay. How the plans of S. Ehrlich?
I don't know, Mr. Ehrlich.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This went through an extensive community process, including a presentation to the Ashmont Adams Civic Associations and five onsite abutters meetings. The applicant has worked extensively with the community to accommodate their concerns with the unit count, the design, the parking, and the site conditions, including the proposal to put a dumpster on site to accommodate the trash concerns. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. There are abutters letters on record with the board, and I believe the applicant has more to submit as well.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Can you explain how the parking is supposed to work?
Of course, Madam Chair. As I mentioned earlier, the site is bounded on three sides by roads. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the site is bounded on three sides by roads. Uh, it fronts the public way, which is Minnit Street, but it's bounded on the right side in the rear by Minnit Park Road. So we would, uh, the occupant would, um, access, uh, Minnit Park via Park Street, drive up the small hill, the twenty-foot grade change, and park in the rear of the building, and then would step down to the rear staircase for entrance to the building, and...
And then how would they exit, same way?
They'd exit the same way, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, um, what's across Minnit Park in the rear of the building? Is, are there...
Across Minnit Park, Madam Chair, is our, is a single-family house on the corner of Minnit Park and Minnit Street, but across on Minnit Park are two or three relatively new townhouses.
Okay. And you're not proposing, I guess it's because of the grade change, there's no possibility of screening and buffering, so that takes care of that, okay. Just talking about, so, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the PDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Case, calling BOA 945-356-185 London Street. This is a complete renovation and living space addition, change occupancy from a three-family to a four-family. The violation is Article 25, Section 5. This is a flood hazard district. Article 53, Section 8, a four-family dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article 53, Section 9, the lauder area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, uh, business address at 51 Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking to meet to change the legal occupancy of the building from a three-family to a four-family, um, to erect a one-story addition and a small rear addition off the back.
Is this, uh, construction underway?
No, it's not. Um, zoning sub-district is a 3F 2,000. Our lot size is 2,500 square feet. The zoning violations are as follows: four-family use is forbidden use. FAR, uh, required FAR is 1.0, um, we're proposing 1.4. Building height, um, requirement is three stories at thirty-five feet, we're proposing four stories at forty feet, five inches. Front yard setback, um, requirement is five feet, uh, we're doing a modal frontage. Uh, side yard is two and a half required, we have 2.8 and 2.2. So we're on one side, we're, um, a little bit short on this side. Off-street parking requirement is four, we have zero. Um, Madam Chair, the, the handout that I showed you, I just wanted to illustrate, um, what is going on, on that street. Um, the first page, um...
Sorry, Derek, um, is this an abutter to the project, the same developer as on this, on this address?
That's correct. So if you look at the second page, um, the, the building that's under construction now is number 187 London Street. Directly to the right is 185, which is not started yet. 187 was approved by the board last year and is currently under construction. We are just simply seeking to do the same thing at 185. It's the same owner, same developer, um, as, as 187.
And I forget, is there a roof deck on this?
No, there's not.
No roof?
And the, the top floor is pushed back and recessed eight feet from the front, as is, um, the one, at number 187, um, which is illustrated on the second page of the handout.
And the fourth unit would be the addition?
That's correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
George, your answer.
Any questions from the board?
Also, Madam Chair, we have, um, a petition with some of the abutters' signatures, and we have a, a letter from the owner at 187 to support this.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record of opposition for this project. At this time, this project didn't get any support from the community. The abutters have many concerns about the proposal, and also Maverick Central Neighborhood Association voted against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council also would also like to go on the record in opposition to this proposal.
Quick, support of 187?
That, that project went through the process before the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association was in existence. Um, I don't know the exact date of when that project was approved, but I don't recall it going through the community process.
Oh, if it was an, um, appeal, it should've, because it looks like it would have very much the same violations as this, um, right, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, it's exactly the same.
Okay, did you want to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record.
My name's Michael Mancusi, 193 London Street. I'm about three houses, uh, to the left of it, of that, uh, project. The 187, like you said, uh, is very similar to it. Unfortunately, by some unknown accident, none of the opposing, uh, abutters were notified about it until after that 187 was, was already passed. But on this one here, uh, the lot size is insufficient, there's already, they're doing a four-story, uh, the same owners on 187. Uh, there's another couple of houses that are going to four stories. There's not enough parking, there's already no parking left on the street, and people are coming down from upper end of the street, lower end of the street, trying to find parking spots, so adding another story to it. It is a 3F, uh, 2,000 lot, and by the size of it, it's gonna be about almost two, almost four thousand square feet, because they're planning on adding probably part of the basement. You've got, uh, four stories now, that's a pretty good-sized building. Everybody's gonna be driving with cars, so there's not gonna be enough parking over there on it. They're making it a lot bigger from the size it is, it's more than double the size of the building that's currently there, even without the four-story.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, councillor?
Madam Chair, that, that fourth unit is approximately 685 square feet.
Okay.
That would be added to the current building.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Given that there's no second, I need another motion. Fine people.
I'll second the denial.
You second the denial? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, this has been denied.
Madam Chair, can we request that that be denied while prejudice, so we can go back?
No, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I'll be done.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 952-103, 658 to 660 East Broadway.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself.
This is a renovation of an existing building at 658 East Broadway to include an addition in the rear yard and additional floor to combine lots 654, 656, 656R, and 658, 660 East Broadway Street, and demolish the existing building at 654 East Broadway Street. Change occupancy from a restaurant, offices, and three units to restaurant, offices, and eight units. The violation is Article 68, Section 8, a floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the height is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 69, 69, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 27S, Section 5, this is in the South Boston iPod, and Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restricted district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. With me this afternoon is Travis Blake from Souza Architecture, together with Joe Akari, who's the owner, developer.
On the record, I'd just like to note that Ms. Fallon has refused herself from this proposal. Uh, go ahead.
So as Mr. Fortune read out, Madam Chair, uh, this proposal is, basically you have the one restaurant with the playwright, and then you have two buildings behind it, those two buildings will be raised, combined they have five residential units, and then we're renovating an existing three units and adding a floor. Um, net is going to be eight units to eight units, so that we know additional units and currently what's existing on the property. The, um...
Just walk us through the building, then. So the first floor would be the restaurant, the restaurant and retail. Do we know what the restaurant, who the restaurant uses?
So currently, the restaurant is a playwright, um, and that will be expanded into that space at another date. That is a, a licensing issue and fire department issue that we'd have to go through.
Okay, then the second floor is office?
That's correct.
And tell us the breakdown on the residential units?
Uh, there are seven, two-bedroom, two-baths, those average a thousand to fourteen hundred square feet, and there's one three-bedroom, two and a half baths at fifteen hundred and thirty square feet.
And, um, is there a roof deck?
There is not. Uh, through the community process, we eliminated.
And, um, let's see, is there an issue with parking?
There's...
Is it a violation? No, I guess, oh, off-street parking is insufficient.
Yeah, there's currently no parking on-site the way it's set up, because it's basically a row house, it's attached to all other buildings on the street.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
George, your answer.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. We held an abutters meeting on June 5th, um, some concerns were raised, and the owner gave his number to work out those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Charlie Levin from Councilor Ed Flynn's office, uh, we'd like to go on record in opposition. Uh, there was a subsequent community meeting after the abutters meeting, in which civic groups and residents relayed concerns about quality of life issues. Uh, the applicant then deferred here at the ZBA and met with the neighbors recently again on these issues. It looked like both sides, uh, worked in negotiating good faith and make a compromise, but unfortunately, they couldn't come to a consensus. Uh, we'd like to see everyone come back to the table and try to work out these outstanding issues.
So please tell me, is the quality of life related to this project, or is it general quality of life?
Uh, general quality of life, um, people have cited, um, concerns about noise, et cetera.
General noise, or noise from this particular project?
They're, they're talking about this project, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, will be at City Council Lodge, uh, Michael Flaherty. Due to the communal efforts that went into drafting Article 68, the council does not support this project as proposed. Um, he does note that the proponent worked with the neighborhood, uh, but there are still many concerns, um, from direct abutters, and due to that fact, the council does not support the project.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Harvey George's office. We oppose this project, but we would also like to see the, um, both sides come together and continue speaking. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board, my name is Luanne O'Connor, and I represent the City Point Neighborhood Association, Vice Chair, as well as speaking for the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association as well, working in conjunction. Uh, we, we oppose this project, um, for several reasons, and what we're asking the board to consider today is to actually uphold the legal zoning of Article 68.
What's your opposition based on?
The opposition is, um, that a bar, or a bar with live entertainment are forbidden under Article 68, MFR slash LS. Uh, we also oppose to, and that goes back to Article 68 dash seven. Most of the attempts to work with the neighborhood, um, are operational issues versus you asked for quality of life, the quality of life...
You know, somebody had mentioned quality of life, so I was just trying to understand what, whether the quality of life was related to quality in life in general in the neighborhood, or for this particular project?
It would definitely would be for this particular project, Madam Chair.
So tell me what that would mean?
Um, East Broadway is under Article 68 with an FAR of 1.5 and a height of thirty-five feet. The proponent is asking to triple, I mean, I'm sorry, to double the FAR to 2.99, and to ask for an additional ten feet. So Broadway, East Broadway, has not been zoned for that. So with that, the quality of life issues that are bringing forth with this project are the expansion of the playwright. Um, we cannot get into capacity, he won't come through with that. He owns another bar, and I, and I do use bar versus restaurant. Um, on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights, this particular project, you can't utilize the sidewalk. There are crowds of young millennials out there, smoking, vaping, um, drinking, and it's right abutting to the, uh, public library, the South Boston Public Library, which is open in the evenings, um, you know, certain days during the week, Mondays and Thursdays, thank you. Um, so it's not something that we want to subject our children to, or our senior citizens, because we are still a neighborhood.
So the, um, so the issue is with the current restaurant and their, their control of their patrons?
Absolutely, and the size of blowing out the back, um, and expanding it. So what we're asking for is, there are so many variances here, um, it's a forbidden usage, so we're asking to please just uphold the zoning that is currently in place.
Okay, tell us about the residential uses, because there are, um, eight units proposed. Uh, are you, is, are you looking at that, too?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The residential uses, there's eight units proposed?
Yes.
Are you seeing that as quality, impacting the quality of life?
The, uh, that's where we'd like for Mr. Akari and his attorney, um, to come back to the table. We want, we would like for him to, or have a discussion about height and density. If we can reach somewhere in the middle with height and density, then I think that we can both be happy. But with this current height, it's going to be too tall, too dense, no parking, too everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board.
So ma'am, could you give us additional information?
Yes.
Because I think, um, the person who just talked was, was pretty comprehensive, so...
Mary Mary Lowery, Director Abutter, 651 East Broadway, South Boston, Mass. I live directly across the street from it, and I have, um, some pictures of what the lines look like at 10:30 at night. Um, it's very, very loud, and, um, the patrons, there's also a, um, a package store right beside the playwright, and they sometimes go and they buy some nips and stuff, and they start their drinking while they're in line. They also use the library parking lot as their urinal, and, um, I have some pictures of that as well. Um, I have a letter here from the Gate of, Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association opposing the project as well. Um, it's just like, it's just too much, there's no parking at all. Um, it's just a very, very difficult place to live, and I've lived on this block my whole life, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor?
Sure, um, if I could just address, as you noticed, everybody, even those who oppose, from the political side of this room, all stated that the developer in good faith met with this community member, so we actually met, we deferred last, last...
I think the question for you today is, um, is, is a good faith, is, is future conversation in good faith, is it going to be productive?
So that's a very good point, because if we go back to when we initially appeared before you guys, we asked for a deferral at that point. At that point, I had submitted a letter, which you all have up there, and there were several issues that, um, Ed Flynn, myself, Joey Akari, and Charlie from Ed's office, we sat down, we talked about it, they said these are the issues, and those were soundproofing the building, making bal, um, the balconies, Juliet balconies, crowd control at clo, uh, closing, bands move to the, uh, rear of the building, closing windows...
I'm sorry, so it was soundproofing Juliet balconies, um, ballet parking?
Crowd control at closing, bands move to the back of the building, closing the windows at 8:30, adding cameras and lights on the, on, around the building, because to address the issue that, um, Ms. Melanari brought up with respect to, if there was anybody doing that, then that would pose it. So we had a meeting, not this past Friday, the Friday before, we walked out of the meeting, all those situations, all their requests that were on the sheet were met, and that letter, which you guys have, was sent to Ed Flynn, and we agreed to everything they requested. Now, at the eleventh hour, this comes up regarding a licensing issue, not a zoning issue, with respect to the capacity of the, um, the playwright bar, which is being redone. That's the issue that they're getting stuck on right now. That's something that has to go to the fire department, as you all know, and to licensing.
But the question to us, though, is that, it, what's not actually listed here, I'm assuming that, in fact, that the way this, um, appeal is set up, where is the expansion of, of capacity at the bar? What, what is, what is the violation number, is that 6829?
We don't have a violation.
We don't have a violation? We don't have a violation?
No.
So, then you're, your intention then is, under this scenario, is to expand the space but not increase the capacity?
That will be an issue that, that Mr. Akari will have to deal with licensing in the fire department. My understanding...
No, generally, increasing capacity for establishments like this come to the, to this board first before going to licensing. You know, so, so this sounds to me that you're proposing same capacity, more space. And if it's, if that's not true, then, you know, maybe you need to get a new rejection letter, request a deferral, get a new rejection letter, or, I mean, it's, it's a decision for you to make.
So, that's not true because the, I'm not going to mislead anybody on this board. The intention is to expand the use of that bar, and that was several things that came into that, a vestibule, soundproofing, and all the other things that go along with it. So, if that's the board's suggestion, then we would get an updated refusal letter that would address that and come back before the board.
Okay, so, in the meantime, then, that's a request for a deferral, then?
Absolutely.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Well, we are probably squeezing November 29th. I mean, I'm sorry, November 12th.
November 12th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling next piece, calling BOA 947-223-63, Marion Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family into a two-family, then extend living space into the basement level and add a new roof deck to be accessed by a hatch. The violation is Article 27 T dash 5. This is in the East Boston I-Pod. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. And Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Southern Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Richard Jeffrey. He was intending to be here as a doctor's appointment. He could not make it. He was here at the last meeting. This is deferred, Madam Chair, the last meeting for two reasons. One, I believe the updated set of plans needed to get to the board. I don't believe they were available at the last hearing. In addition, there was a request to consider locating the utilities at each of the units. This proposal, just to recap, involves a change of occupancy, rarely seen from a three-family to a two-family, actually reducing the number of units in the building. This will be intended to be owner occupied. The reprogramming of the building will result in two duplex units, so there will be extension of living space into the basement. There is a proposed roof deck that also does include a headhouse. The original condition did have hatch. There was an update to the plan that was filed. I believe that's the plan that you have. And that was also presented to the neighborhood at the Eagle Hill Civic Association, which did approve this unanimously. The question that typically arises, and we know that Eagle Hill is sensitive to the headhouse issue, is the view and the proximity of other buildings in the area. The Eagle Hill Square seems to be the more sensitive area for headhouses. This is located well outside the Eagle Hill Square, and there was no specific objection to the headhouse proposal for access to the building.
Okay, so, so let's start with the basement, extension into the basement. Tell us what's the use of the basement space?
So, it will be living area that's pertinent to the first unit, so Unit 1 will occupy the basement, the first level.
Any bedrooms on the basement?
I believe the plan does show a bedroom, yes.
We're going to have to make you suffer through this, reading these plans.
Yes, there is a bedroom.
Is there a bedroom there?
There is one.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
In excess of seven-and-a-half feet, all intended to comply with the building code.
Okay. What's the unit sizes of each one?
Each unit's about 1,200 square feet with the combined space in the basement for the first and then the two levels being incorporated to one and the second and third level.
Okay, and tell us about the roof deck?
The roof deck would be exclusive to the upper unit only, and again, access by headhouse. Mr. Jeffrey, looking at the design of the hatch, was not comfortable. He intends to occupy this with his family, and the safety issues that go along with accessing the roof deck were, were considered and one of the reasons why the headhouse was proposed.
So, this is not an existing headhouse?
It is not.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, well, yeah, for the first time. The headhouse is... The headhouse is toward the rear half of the building. I, I mean, given it's not a multi-unit, I don't understand why, why, why a hatch couldn't have been utilized.
It was, it was safety concerns specifically. Because you do have the stairwell, it would be access from the stairwell within the building, and it needs to simply have a hatch.
There are all access from stairwell from the building.
Yes, no, and some are access from the rear deck. This one...
There's no, there's no locking system for the kids?
I, I think it's the safety coming back into, into the hatch versus having an entryway with the headhouse.
We, we approve hatches all day long. No one says anything about safety.
I, I understand, and simply presenting the proposal.
I understand you have the, the lax views of your client.
Any other questions for the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the developer addressed all the concerns of the Abutters and also got strong support from the Abutters and from the Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Um, I'm going to make a motion to approve PPA design review, but I'm going to ask the designer review to include a review of the headhouse and possible replacement with a hatch.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last case of the day, calling BOA 922-475-69 to 71 Maverick Square. This is a change of occupancy from a dry cleaning store with accessory storage to six apartments in a registered marijuana dispensary. The violation is Article 53, Section 11, cannabis establishment as a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, sir. I'm James Smith. I'm an attorney representing the petitioner. We're at 50 Congress Street in Boston. At the, this firm is Smith &amp; Sullivan Croppet. And with me, to my left, is George Moranci, who is working with us in the zoning component. We do a awful lot of cannabis in our firm. And to my right is Steve Vasco. Steve is a part of the ownership group that resides at 21 Barnes Avenue in East Boston. As you heard, this is 6971 Maverick Square. We have a host community agreement signed by the city in February. Our firm, and I'll focus for a few moments on the cannabis portion of our presentation. We do a number of cannabis clients across the Commonwealth, now close to four dozen. We focus a lot on the application at the CCC level, spent a lot of time at that, at that particular location. Security is always the foremost issue. We, here in communities, it's also important, yes.
So, may I hear from Mr. Moranci, please?
Absolutely.
Can you speak about, so this is going from a dry cleaning and storage to a six-family and dispensary? What's the zoning district that this is in?
The, George Moranci, I know, I've been introduced. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Procedural history, this matter was before the board in March of 2019. There were two cannabis cases in succession, direct succession, at the hearing. This was the second, after the first was approved. The question at the time was because of the one-half-mile buffering zone that is in the code, whether this board could, in fact, approve under a conditional use standard, which is the standard in this. This is a commercially zoned district.
This is a neighborhood shopping?
Uh, yes, I believe is the case.
That's what we have, is a neighborhood shopping district.
Yeah, whether, because otherwise it would be forbidden use in any residential district. So, the question was whether the board could, not only consecutively, but could approve two uses within a half-mile distance of each other.
No, we, we get it. Now, I just want to just get everything clear on this particular project?
Right.
I just want to look at it.
This application is simply for a conditional use permit. That is the sole violation. That is before the board. It's not a variant standard. At the March hearing, the matter was substantially put on record in terms of appropriate facilities being established and maintained. Mr. Hunt can go, Mr. Smith can go through that again for the board. I, I realize that some members sitting today were not here in March. The reason why we are here today, proceed...
There were two people in March, so, you were here two in March? Okay.
So, I think there were three or four members.
So, it might be worth talking through.
So, in that, so I can, I will obviously speak to zoning again if there is that recurring question on how the board may approve this on a conditional use standard. Right now, Attorney Smith can, and I think it would benefit the record and the members of the board who are not sitting in March, just to have the particulars of the, the actual operation and the proposed use put on the record.
Okay, so, tell us, we generally have questions that are very specific. One, tell us what the square footage is of this facility?
I'll have that available. Madam Chair, the, the square footage is, there's a frontage of about 22 feet, the front and back, and the length of the space is 40, roughly 43, 44 feet.
Okay. And the retail component will be, what percentage of that space? Because I know you probably need storage, storage in the back.
We have storage in the back. We also have the basement available to us. And under the regulations, which are really strict in terms of storage, there'll be actually a vault. The product itself is locked at all times until there's an opportunity for a sale, in which case the product is then delivered and the transaction then takes place. But that is typically, that is always off the floor. That is always off the retail center.
Okay.
So, we use the basement.
And what are your proposed hours of operation?
We, we would like to go nine to nine if we could. We are flexible and would obviously respect the wishes of the city and the neighborhood.
And nine to nine, seven days a week?
Twelve to nine on Sundays, excuse me.
And twelve to nine on Sundays? Okay. How do you anticipate controlling the lines?
The, there's a couple of things in play with lines. Certainly, we are all very familiar with the first two openings when, when cars came from pretty much the entire northeastern part of the United States. There are 22 stores have opened since then. Lines have not really been an issue. There's been a number of ways that happens. As more stores open, clearly, the impact is spread throughout.
We get that, but the fact of the matter is, I periodically drive on Route 9, and those lines haven't abated, so...
Clearly, right now, there's one, in, within 128, there's actually two stores open. A third has appointment only. If there are lines, there are any issues at all, we could pick to do appointment only. Understand that...
But you're not talking right now, so, so you have no plan for crowd control?
Well, no, there's, no, there's, there's always, we have security at all times. Live security, unarmed, clearly, at all times for, for crowd control. If lines do develop, we will have some room inside our store. We would move to appointment only. We don't want lines. We want to enhance the square, not harm the square. Our goal is to make Maverick Square the kind of square that I think all of us hope it and thinks it can be.
You're not starting up on, on appointment-only basis?
Well, I will tell you, based on the CCC process, we probably can't open this store until the middle of 2020, optimistically. By that time, we might be the 100th store opened. I don't think there's probably, there's probably more, more economic, more store, more customers out of Dunkin' Donuts than will be here. If there are any issues at all, we don't want lines in the square. We don't want lines out our door. We will go, we will, A, have our security at all times. That's every moment we're opened. And if we need to do something to control the lines, we could do appointment only. That's the method that's typically been used in other stores where that is essential.
So, it sounds to me that people, that stores generally start with the line scenario, and after they've built up a base, go to appointments. But in that time, there is an impact on the community. What is your plan for that?
That has not been the experience, I think, of the folks who've come before us. We'd be delighted, we will gladly accept appointment only initially. That's not a problem for us. We don't think that, that, we think that that has worked in a number of stores across the Commonwealth. Typically, what happens, it's appointment only, and then after a period of time, when business kind of normalizes, that process kind of moves on. And sometimes it's a matter of a week or two, sometimes it could be a month or two. And Brookline, which is an extraordinary store, given it's, again, within 128, it's the, the only store right now, frankly, that has, at least, no appointments and is a very populous store. But as I say, we'll be about the 100th, I would estimate, there'll be at least 100 stores in front of us. But we'll gladly go appointment only initially, not a problem.
We have to look at worst-case scenario, thinking that you might be the only store in Boston, so...
Madam Chair, members, I, I think testimony has been presented that this store would likely not open until mid-2020, yet the board is being asked to approve this today. So, as the chair and as other members have pointed out, whether or not there's a line queuing in Maverick Square is a today issue. I think my clients would be happy if it were the desire of the board to approve this with the proviso that it be by appointment only certainly at the outset of operations. By the time that this were to open, I think it could be better adjudged whether that would be necessary. It certainly could and would open that way if it were the desire of the board, and then that could be modified in terms of input from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and the local elected officials. And the police station is right nearby. We'd be glad to work with the local police. At any time, they feel that we'll open appointment only, and when the police say this is fine, we can move on. But that's, again, a difficult decision.
And how does security work? When, when product is delivered, what, what is the security mechanism?
Product is delivered randomly, probably not, not much more than twice a week. It's, it's a very small product. It's not, you know, it's, it's obviously very valuable.
And it's prepackaged?
It's pre, everything is totally prepackaged, sealed, cannot be opened by anybody in our store, in our employ.
So, so how is the layout of your store? Are you having a display section in the front? Because we have seen plans from other stores that propose that and then purchase in a separate section of that store.
There'll be a security vestibule when people enter. Prior to entering the store, you must, you can't open the door, get through that first door without having a government-issued ID that shows you at least 21 years of age. That's done via camera or via a live security person. Then you get inside our store, and there, there's, there is one of those machines that actually tests to make sure that what you have is a legitimate government ID. That's the second point where we visually, and we, we determine that you are the appropriate age and legal to, to do business with. The third point is when you actually make a purchase, we check the ID a third time. And at that point, this is the purchase. You will have a product that is sealed, that cannot be opened in the store. It's against the regulations and against the law, frankly. You can't open it in the store. And the child-approved seal, which has been approved by the CCC, is an incredibly aggressive seal. I know firsthand of that. I've seen a number of these. They're very challenging to open. The, and nobody is allowed to open, obviously, on premises. We have security off-premises. We have tremendous amount of cameras, which are required by the CCC. We want to go beyond the CCC requirements on security cameras, but only go up and down our side of the square, but across the square because of our unique location, which is not on a street. We actually have a square. At no point in time can that product be opened. You will be on camera. If, and, and our security, its job is to make certain, as is the law. That product can't be opened in, in, in any public area at all. It has to be...
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, the drawings are, are fine.
Any questions from the board?
So, yeah, I would like to, Mr. Moranci raised the issue of what happened back in March when, I mean, we still have the half-mile issue. And I guess I... And I guess I am asking you, what you would suggest, how you would suggest we consider that?
So the, without going too long and being overly pedantic, but it does require a somewhat specific legal explanation. Our position from the beginning, and I was not here in March, but since I've been brought on board at that time, I think the applicant's position has been that with respect to what is in the zoning code, with respect to the half-mile buffer zone, existing means existing. For anyone unfamiliar with the language, it's contained in both Article 2 and Article 2A of the code. It's done, this half-mile buffer zone, as it's being called, was imposed by means of a definitional amendment to the code. Hence, it's in Article 2 and Article 2A zoning code definitions and neighborhood zoning code definitions. And what, what the definition of cannabis establishment says is that as a use, it is conditional in commercial sub-districts, it is forbidden in residential sub-districts. There is an asterisk, or two asterisks, I believe, after both conditional and forbidden as indications of the status of the uses. And then, that asterisk information, essentially a footnote, says that provided that no cannabis establishment shall be within one-half mile of another existing establishment. This board, I think, struggled with the definition of what, or the interpretation of what that meant. What does existing mean? These cases, this case and the case that came immediately before it in March, brought that issue into, you know, stark consideration. We just approved one, how can we approve another one within a half-mile? And it hinges on the fact that existing means existing in terms of statutory construction. Now, there is an acknowledgement, I would suggest, on the part of the city between then and between each time that we have deferred until today when we're going forward. The city council has addressed the issue, working with the mayor's office. The city council has drafted a proposal that would be submitted to the zoning commission and has not been acted upon. I don't know if the mayor has officially signed off on it, but what the city council has said in its proposed amendment being submitted to the zoning commission is that existing henceforth will mean anything that is in existence and use, or any establishment that has received any approval whatsoever from the city of Boston, including zoning approval. That's what it will say. It is not what it says now. And the fact that the city council has drafted something to be sent to the zoning commission saying that that is what it is going to mean henceforth, means, to my eyes, that that is not what it means now.
Okay, so, I don't think it's, I think we should be operating on common sense and not legal, not angels on the head of a pin. At the time that that was raised, what baffled me was why there were two host agreements drafted when, in an obvious situation where there was a conflict. And let's say it takes six months from approval to building the project. Just pick some arbitrary number, right? So you approve one, defer the second, and now, if we potentially approve that one, the other one has a few months head start. At a certain point, it will become existing. Does that mean then, that approval is no longer accurate, because, is it no longer applicable? Or will it become after the fact? I just, let me finish, Madam Chair. I just think that there is a problem with making, the common sense is, you have a buffer zone, you have a buffer zone. And I sort of feel like we're evading the intent of the.
With your, I'm sorry.
Let's stop the conversation right there, because I just need us to just take a step back and look at this. Because current, current zoning talks about existing as existing, operational, with permits, whatever existing means. So let's stop right there. Let me ask, is there anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on the record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan of the Office of City Council, Michael Flaherty. First off, acknowledging that the council had been the lead sponsor of the buffer zone, of the buffer zone regulation that went into effect. The council would like to go on record in support of this particular proposal. The only, the only difference here being that, the difference between the buffer zone regulation of half-mile and the proposal here, there's a very, very small difference between what's being proposed here and the, and between the other proposal that was recently allowed by this board. The council also would like to point out that he feels that there's a compelling interest to get an equity in veteran-owned business open under the new legislation, but also would like to emphasize that this would be a stringent exception and not, and not the rule to the half-mile buffer zone regulation. So due to that, you're, Madam Chair, the council would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? And please, as I asked before, give us new information as each of you come up, okay?
Thomas Garvey, 137 Webster Street in East Boston. I don't know if there's new information to you or not, but it was to me. I called the state cannabis commission yesterday, and the dispensary at 253 Meridian Street that we're discussing does have provisional approval. It's in their pipeline, moving towards final approval. So I think we can expect it to be one of those 100 new dispensaries that council to my left referenced, which will put it 1.4 miles from the Maverick Square state. And I also just want to thank you for bringing up the huge lines at the Brookline Village dispensary. And in my opinion, and the opinion of many people in East Boston, Maverick Square cannot accommodate that kind of line. And also, thank you for bringing up the apparent fact that the applicants don't really have a plan to deal with that and don't really have the space to deal with it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Francis McKeon Deacon from Most Holy Redeemer Parish in East Boston. Most Holy Redeemer Parish and our school, East Boston Central Catholic, are located very close to Maverick Square. We have over 2,000 parishioners, and our school serves students who are three years old through the eighth grade. Approximately 150 students use the T to get to the school. Maverick Square is the heart of East Boston and no place for a pot shop. The location is too close to schools such as ours, in the McKay School at 122 Cottage Street, in the Dante Allegori Montessori School at 37 Gove Street. Coordinates Counseling LLC at 154 Maverick, an addiction specialist, is only 230 feet from the proposed Bloom location. Clean Slate Center is located nearby at 82 Para Street, is an addiction and recovery center for alcohol and opiate addiction. Maverick Square is a congested area with heavy traffic and little parking for business. The pot shop at 69 to 71 Maverick Street, with its long lines on the street, and potential for related crime, does not serve the community of East Boston. It serves only to reduce the quality of life in the neighborhood of Maverick Square. As we know, business involves taking risks. Sometimes the risks pay off, sometimes they don't. Bloom took the risk of proposing a pot shop less than one-half mile from the pot shop proposed by Berkshire Roots, located at 251 to 253 Meridian Street. Berkshire Roots took the same risk, and for them, it paid off. The board approved the Berkshire Roots proposal. Bloom took the, Bloom assumed the risk of building too close to Berkshire Roots. Bloom's risk did not pay off. That's the cost of doing business.
Excuse me, Deacon. What additional issues do you have? You talked about the recovery facilities in proximity, you talked about the lines.
This is the last issue.
Okay, and just speak to us, don't read to us, please.
All right. Bloom assumed the risk of building too close to Berkshire Roots. The risks did not pay off, and that's the cost of business. In the future, perhaps, they'll proceed in their ventures with greater caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you have the hard spot. Give us new information.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Denise McKeon, and I live right around the corner from the central square facility.
What's your address?
56 Princeton Street, East Boston. And I believe the law is meant to implement and not to seek advantage and change it around for advantage. So I would like the law of being too close to the other facility, for the law to be, for us to be law-abiding, and to not just fiddle-faddle with the law, and to just impose the law as the law stands, instead of reinventing the law. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, members, in rebuttal, on the issue again, not to go into too long of a conversation, although I'm perfectly willing to sit here for as long as that would take. Right now, we are in a situation where there is inarguably ambiguity with the zoning code regulation of cannabis establishments with respect to existing facilities. This and Berkshire Roots signed host community agreements the same day. They appeared at the Board of Appeal in March on the same day. They appeared in succession to one another. Those facts painted in bright light the fact that the zoning code amendment as written created the potential for ambiguity and conflict with respect to the half-mile buffer zone. That issue is being addressed. This issue should not come up in the future on subsequent cases. It came up here, but to say simply that whoever was first in line, literally at the hearing, should be able to proceed and open an establishment and the other should not be because the former may or may not open, is unfair, quite frankly. This is a zoning approval. Right now, that zoning approval requires that this board, as a conditional use matter, only approve a facility that is not located within a half-mile of an existing facility. There is no such existing facility.
Thank you.
May I, Madam Chair, just add a closing point on, and I wanted to make this point, our ownership group, to my right is Steve Vasco. Steve and his father own 50%. They're not fronts. They own 50% of our businesses, of the business. There are four owners in their entirety. All four reside in East Boston. You just heard the name of the other entity, Berkshire Roots. They're from Berkshire County, which is an appropriate name. Steve has spent eight years in the military. He's a veteran. Half of ownership is Latino, which is what the council and the CCC, frankly, and all of us, frankly, are trying to entice and encourage in this business. It's a very unique situation. We are from the square. We own the building. Almost everybody who comes before you will be, will come as a retailer, as a tenant who wants renting space. We own this space, and we own the building next door. And the business next door, we run that business, Topol Mex, for a number of years, and we've gotten, it's a very well-run business. Steve has a chart, he can show you very, very briefly, of all the businesses in Maverick Square that support us.
Thank you. Let's stop it right there.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
With design review?
I don't really think it needs designing.
Oh, well, it's changed to six apartments and registered marijuana facility. No? Doesn't matter?
It's almost all interior renovation.
Yeah, okay, so just.
Anyway, but I do want to make, I do want to make a comment, which is that I'm doing this because, on the merits of this particular case, and had this been first on the agenda back in March, we might have had a very different story. So in some way, there's a problem of fairness, but this board never should have been put in this position in the first place. And I continue to feel that way, and maybe this is going to get corrected. But it was, the real issue was the negotiation of the host agreements on the same day. It was knowingly in violation of the buffer zone. But having said that, just out of a basic sense of fairness, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'm going to second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So there's a bit, the motion carries, this project has been.
Chair votes with the motion.
Pardon?
Chair votes with the motion.
Thank you.
The meeting is now adjourned.